Hello, sir, how are you? Good, good. You bring enough for everyone. You know, we have a popcorn machine at the fire department that can bring that over. Keep popping it. Thanks, sir.
Your mother local?
Oh, really? That's all the rescue plan?
No. I don't think we have that. That is true. Right outside. You go to two thirty, one minute, and then another.
Get started here. First, I'd like to thank Chris for printing off the agendas and additional items. I love that development, it's very helpful, thank you so much. We are going to turn it over to Tom for a minute for planning, and then just really briefly, housekeeping, I'm just gonna have everyone direct questions directly to the presenter as questions come up, so we can keep things moving, thanks so much.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. These are just a few items that may be of interest to you, that you would not normally see. River Ridge Mall has submitted a site plan proposing construction of three buildings and a small stage and turf area, that was in the area where the former Macy's was. Framatone has submitted the, a site plan proposing the construction of a 10,500 square foot training facility out behind their facility there. Liberty Christian Academy has submitted a plan proposing a 24,700 square foot gymnasium. And we also have received a rezoning request from I-3 to B-4 down at 1612 Concord Turnpike. That is proposing a hotel on the second floor of that building, event space on the first floor, one of the outbuildings would contain a restaurant, another would be a gymnasium, and they're also proposing a pool and parking areas for that. That's the old Thomasville Furniture Building?
Thomas Johnson.
Thomas Johnson, yes, sir, you're absolutely right. The Planning Commission will be doing a work session on Thursday on some additional chapters for the comprehensive plan, so that process is moving along. And last but not least, Shipley's Doughnuts has opened their first Virginia location, they are a Texas-based company, and Kent's gonna take me out for doughnuts later on today, so that's a minute for planning.
I had a kolache from there on, I had a burger.
I don't know what that is, but it sounds good.
It's a Texas thing.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, that's great. Awesome, we'll hand it over to Mr. Tim Mitchell.
All right. Use this. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of Council, Mayor. So, let's see, keep going, how do I get to the, yes. There we go. All right, this is actually in lieu of a business item briefing, from a timing perspective, we could not get a business item briefing in at a work session prior to having to act on this agenda item. So this is related to the Campbell County Utilities and Service Authority water contract. So what I'll do is I'll do a quick review of the current contract and a review of the supplement that's incorporated into the contract, and then our recommendations going forward. So the term of the contract is from July 1st, 2007 to June 30th, 2027. We have to give a notification to either terminate or renew by June 30th, 2025, so the end of this month. If we don't notify them in either way, the contract will automatically renew as it is in 2027, for a 10-year period. The contract methodology is based upon a cost, it's a wholesale contract, so it's based upon a cost of service study that we've performed, and then we update that annually to make sure that the rates that they're paying are paying for the services that they're receiving, and that's based upon a recommendation from the American Water Works Association. Currently, they have a provisional rate of $2.50 per 100 cubic feet, just as a reference, Lynchburg City customers pay $3.29, and Campbell County residents pay $4.95. So in addition to the 250, they have to add on all their administrative overhead and maintenance costs to that before they charge their rates to their customers. And this results in about $600,000 in annual revenue to the water fund. So the, the current contract included the May 30th, 2002 first supplement, and this supplement was done when we extended a water line along 460 towards Mount Athos, and so 460 East going out of town. And we, at that point, when this was negotiated, we want, we had a provision in the supplement to include a basically minimum, a minimum payment, so it's a take-or-pay situation where if they don't use a half million gallons per day, then they're still paying for it. And this was because we had an investment, an infrastructure investment in the water line, and we wanted to make sure that we had steady revenue coming in while that, while that water infrastructure was financed. The supplement also states that they cannot develop, and this, this water line primarily serves BWXT on Mount Athos Road, that's the primary customer. The agreement states the water cannot be sold to a new retail or commercial space greater than 50,000 square feet without authorization from City Council. It also allows for the possibility of revenue sharing, so if there was a large commercial development that came in, we can negotiate revenue sharing with, with them. And then it also allows for negotiation of capacity for future sales to other political subdivisions such as Appomattox. So in summary, we, we think the contract is a valuable asset, we do receive a significant amount of revenue annually from the contract, about $600,000, we'd have to increase rates fairly substantially, eight to 10 percent, to compensate for that revenue if it were to go away. However, we do feel like that there, this is an opportunity to renegotiate certain terms, clean up the contract, because it is two contracts now, the supplemental agreement as well as the, the 2007 contract, and just make it cleaner going forward. So we, we will be bringing this back to City Council as a regular business item, it will not be a public hearing, as a regular business item on June 24th for a decision from City Council related to notifying CCUSA that we intend to renew, and this is, this is not, so this is not getting into any contract negotiations at this point, just to intend to renew or not. Then I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. So on June 24th, is that coming in the form of a bib or general business or both?
It will just be general business at that point.
Is there a specific reason for that that I'm missing? I'm, I don't have an issue with that, I'm just trying to track.
So initially, this actually goes back a couple of meetings, we, we had initially planned for this to go, to have a discussion in executive session with Council a few meetings ago, we ran out of time, so we came back, we talked about this last week. At that point in time, we were under the assumption that the work session today was supposed to be set aside for a, nothing but conflict of interest training through the attorney's office. We've since changed that, and we're now, we're all budget work session, so there wasn't time to get it at work session, initially we thought today as a bib and then to Council, so we thought the next best was to bring it to PDC, have PDC recommend it or not, and then have it go to Council, almost like we, we do with grants in the Finance Committee. So it really goes back a couple of meetings as to why we've, we've ended up here.
Okay, that, that's helpful background.
There was a lot of shuffling. I got a simple question, you want to reserve the right to negotiate, it sounds like you may have some things in mind you probably don't want to talk about publicly because it's contract, but in general, it sounds like you're in favor of renewing, is that what I'm getting?
Yes, I'm in favor of renewing, I know there's a lot going on with Campbell County at this point, but you know, this is related to the water agreement, I think, again, cleaning up the two contracts and putting it into one going forward would be cleaner, and there may be some other terms that we want to clean up and negotiate, and we certainly would keep Council informed as we go along through those negotiations and get your input into that before any type of final decisions made.
And then those negotiations will take place before the June 24th meeting, and that's where you, you ask us to do something?
No, no, actually, those, those negotiations will take place prior to June 30th, 2027.
Okay.
So we'll have a couple of years.
That seems like a tight schedule, yeah.
This, this, on June 24th, all we're asking for is permission from City Council to send a letter saying that we intend to renew the contract, but we want to reserve the right for negotiations, basically, and we'll work with the city attorney to craft the resolution to that effect for that meeting.
Thank you. No comments.
Couple things, so I'm in favor of this, it sounds like we do need to make a motion today as far as a recommendation. With that, does Council have to suspend its rules of procedure in order to bypass the bib process?
The bib process is not built into Council rules and procedure, it's more a practice that we have followed to not have administratively, to keep Council from hearing about an item on the same day they have to vote on it.
Right, because there's been a lot of confusion around that component of the process lately, so I want to make sure that this doesn't get derailed because we've missed a component of the process that we need to suspend it.
Right, since the bib process is, it's really administrative in nature, it's sort of a commitment that we have made to, unless it's absolutely necessary for whatever reason to make sure that Council isn't hearing about something on the same day they're gonna have to take a vote on it. So it's, it's not.
And I know that it was prior discussion, but I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that, okay, cool, well, if we're good, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and recommend this to Council on June 24th.
Second?
All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Thanks, Tim. Right here.
Can you get the point?
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Lee Newlin, I'm very excited for this presentation, thank you so much for putting this together. I requested a sidewalk presentation months ago, I have received questions from constituents regarding our process with sidewalks and sidewalk decisions, and so I'm actually very excited to dive into this, so thank you.
Yes, hopefully it will serve the purpose of informing what needs to be informed. So I'm gonna try to explain the various methods that the city uses for installation of public sidewalks throughout the city. There are several, several ways going about doing this, we have specific projects that are just for construction of sidewalks, they're either funded through the city, capital projects, or through VDOT or federal grants. Let's say there are city projects, some of the other grants that we talked about last meeting, as far as VDOT funding, is a highway safety improvement program, or transportation alternatives program, or safe routes to school. Sidewalks are also added when they're ancillary to a construction project that the city's already doing, whether it's a bridge project, or road reconstruction, or signal projects, if sidewalks are not there, we try to include them in the project. Sidewalks are also added when new street subdivisions are constructed by the developer, it's in the city code, sidewalks have to be on at least one side of the streets that are constructed. Then there's the technical review committee projects, the development projects that come in, and the city code requires the new private development to install sidewalks along the street frontage of the projects, so they also get added that way. Then there's also a section in the city code that allows property owners to request or petition for sidewalks, it's for a 50/50 cost share between the property owner and the city contingent upon funding being available for the city to be able to pay for that 50%. We get very limited requests for this.
Do you have a code reference for that?
I'm sorry, I do not.
That's, that's all right, I'll make notes, thanks.
So some facts about sidewalks, we require the width of sidewalk to be between five feet and eight feet wide depending on the road that it's on, and the classification, and, but all sidewalks must meet the Public Right-of-Way Guidelines, which is called PROWAG, which is a subset of the American Disabilities Act, ADA. So I got acronyms and words all together here for you. The cost for sidewalk, and this is why we really don't get many requests for it, is it gets pretty expensive, sidewalks about $110 to $175 per linear foot, and that cost is just the concrete and the installation, it doesn't include design, if we have to have a wall because of it, it doesn't include grading, handrails, so there's a lot of it that it doesn't include at that price, so cost of sidewalks are fairly expensive.
Can I ask the cost of the town?
Yes, yeah.
Good one. Only the city builds sidewalks, or do we have private contractors?
So if it's a street that's going in, the developer's contractor will build a sidewalk, if it's a private development, whoever their contractor is will put in the sidewalk, we inspect it, we have our inspectors from Public Works that inspect all of it to make sure it goes into city standards.
So the city does not build sidewalks?
We, no, we do not build sidewalks anymore, do we?
That is not a thing.
Even their maintenance is contracted out.
Or maintenance is contracted, so sidewalk maintenance, trip hazards is all contracted.
Okay, thank you.
So that's about it, other than some of the recent projects that we had, that we have had, and some future projects that we're in the process of doing. Kemper Street, which is from the expressway up toward where Campbell Avenue ties into it, was a highway safety improvement project that we've recently done. Jefferson Ridge Parkway several years back was a highway safety improvement project. Old Forest Road from Lincoln to Walmart, that was a city project that we paid for at General Streets, we had a request, specific request from a handicapped person that needed that route to use, I believe is what it was. Woods Road, the city put in sidewalk or pedestrian pass down Woods Road, that was a CIP project from several years back. CDC Campus Drive was the same thing, and then Lincoln Elementary and around Bass and Darrington, they were safe routes to school projects that we installed sidewalks with. And this project was supposed to go before the other ones, I mean, this presentation, so there's a little back and forth here.
Right.
Recent projects that we have put in sidewalk, like ancillary to our own work, was the Lakeside Drive Bridge, the Link Road Bridge, Indian Hill Road Bridge, once again, they didn't have sidewalks around them, so they went in then, Kemper Street Bridge, the Fenwick Signal, we put in sidewalk around it. Liberty Mountain Drive was a revenue sharing project that we had sidewalk installed on when, did that project, as well as John Capron Road. Some of the recent subdivisions where we've had sidewalks installed, Blackwater Run, Locust Thicket, Grove Hill, they're in the same area, Creekside off of Fleetwood Drive, Bennett's Grove, Independence Court, Craftsmen Way, like I said, all those streets that have gone in with subdivisions have sidewalks on them. Then there's the Technical Review Committee projects, the development projects that come in. And the city code requires the new private development to install sidewalks along the street frontage of the projects, so they also get added that way. Then there's also a section in the city code that allows property owners to request or petition for sidewalks. It's for a 50-50 cost share between the property owner and the city contingent upon funding being available for the city to be able to pay for that 50%. We get very limited requests for this.
Do you have a code reference for that?
I'm sorry, I do not.
That's all right. I'll make notes. Thanks.
So some facts about sidewalks. We require the width of sidewalk to be between five feet and eight feet wide, depending on the road that it's on and the classification. But all sidewalks must meet the Public Right-of-Way Guidelines, which is called PROWAG, which is a subset of the American Disabilities Act, ADA. So I got acronyms and words all together here for you. The cost for sidewalk, and this is why we really don't get many requests for it, is it gets pretty expensive. Sidewalk's about $110 to $175 per linear foot. And that cost is just the concrete and the installation. It doesn't include design. If we have to have a wall because of it, it doesn't include grading, handrails. So there's a lot of it that it doesn't include at that price. So costs of sidewalks are fairly expensive. Yes, yeah.
Only the city builds sidewalks, or do we have private contractors?
So if it's a street that's going in, the developer's contractor will build a sidewalk. If it's a private development, whoever their contractor is will put in the sidewalk. We inspect it. We have our inspectors from Public Works that inspect all of it to make sure it goes into city standards.
So the city does not build sidewalks?
We, no, we do not build sidewalks anymore, do we? Even their maintenance is contracted out.
Or maintenance is contracted, so sidewalk maintenance, trip hazards is all contracted.
Okay, thank you.
So that's about it, other than some of the recent projects that we have had and some future projects that we're in the process of doing. Kemper Street, which is from the expressway up toward where Campbell Avenue ties into it, was a highway safety improvement project that we've recently done. Jefferson Ridge Parkway, several years back, was a highway safety improvement project. Old Forest Road from Lincoln Horn to Walmart, that was a city project that we paid for at General Streets. We had a request, specific request from a handicap person that needed that route to use, I believe is what it was. Woods Road, the city put in sidewalk or pedestrian pass down Woods Road. That was a CIP project from several years back. CDC Campus Drive was the same thing. And then Lincoln Horn Elementary and around Bass and Darrington, they were safe routes to school projects that we installed sidewalks with. And this project was supposed to go before the other ones, I mean, this presentation, so there's a little back and forth here.
Right.
Recent projects that we have put in sidewalk, like ancillary to our own work, was the Lakeside Drive Bridge, the Link Road Bridge, Indian Hill Road Bridge. Once again, they didn't have sidewalks around them, so they went in then. Kemper Street Bridge, the Fenwick Signal, we put in sidewalk around it. Liberty Mountain Drive was a revenue sharing project that we had sidewalk installed on. We did that project as well as John Capron Road. Some of the recent subdivisions where we've had sidewalks installed, Blackwater Run, Locust Thicket, Grove Hill, they're in the same area. Creekside off of Fleetwood Drive, Bennett's Grove, Independence Court, Craftsman Way. Like I said, all those streets that have gone in with subdivisions have sidewalks on them. Some of the recent private developments that have included sidewalks. Rosedale, Boston Lawn, put in sidewalk. The 1125 condominiums or townhomes, whatever, on Gravesmill Road, had to install sidewalk, Frito Lay, Framatone, West Edge, when they did their work, Central Health, and Liberty University. So it's all types of businesses. And then a few of the upcoming projects that have sidewalk on them. Nationwide Drive is under construction now. It's an highway safety improvement program. There's upcoming sidewalk on Old Forest Road from King's Drive to the Railroad Bridge. That's highway safety improvement as well. It will tie to the 501-221 project on the other side of the bridge. Link Road at Boonsborough, we're doing the signal there. We're upgrading sidewalks and crossings there. Woods Ferry to Atlanta is another revenue sharing project where sidewalks are being added. The Roundabout at CVCC and Woods Ferry Road, it's a VDOT project, but sidewalks being added to it through Smart Scale. Also, their interchange project that has sidewalks. The John Lynch Bridge, which is city funds, it will have a sidewalk on it, a protected pedestrian path. Mill Race Drive, there's Phases One and Two. That's a transportation alternatives program. We're putting in sidewalk out there for the industrial park. Florida Avenue, that's revenue sharing. Wadsworth Street, that's city funds. We're putting in a section of sidewalk through there that there was not any, yes.
What's the Florida Avenue revenue sharing on?
That is a project that went back several years back. It was supposed to have sidewalks from James Crossing all the way down across underneath the railroad and back up the other side. We shortened it due to the cost of it and trying to get it under the railroad. So currently, it goes from James Crossing to the Detention Center, and we're in the process of acquiring right-of-way or getting plans for right-of-way now.
Thank you. That's my thought, just.
Yes, sir.
The railroad still won't negotiate with us?
It's just quite a large cost to try to get under the railroad.
Yeah. Last time we looked at it, it was gone. From what we thought was a reasonably priced project at over $20 million.
Yeah, and we basically have to rebuild the railroad chuzzle for the railroad. Bedford Avenue Bridge Project will have sidewalk on it, as well as the Hollins Mill Bridge Project. We're going to get the trail from underneath up over so that the low-water crossing doesn't block it all the time. We've had recent requests for sidewalks. I say recent, we get them all the time. And they're usually the larger, as you can see, larger roads. Leesville Road, Timberlake Road, along Boonsborough, Langhorn Road, Link Road, and Woods Ferry Road. All of those are large costly projects if we try to put them in.
You don't take sidewalks from people and you put them somewhere else. They don't use sidewalks.
No, they don't. They walk in the street. I've been through, yep. And that's-
You can walk these one too, by the way, at night, wearing all black. Taking the gloves in your hands.
And that's really all I have. I'll answer any questions or try to answer any questions.
Thank you. A couple of questions. How does the application work through VDOT and some of the different organizations that we draw down funds from for sidewalks? And then how do we prioritize sidewalk decisions in the city?
Okay, so the application process depends on what type of funds we're trying to apply for. The revenue sharing is every two years, and it's a 50-50. The transportation alternatives is an every-year process that has to go through. Our representative from the Commonwealth Transportation Board has to recommend that project. And they have, I believe they have a million and a half each year in their district to spend on that project, on these projects. So that's more of a, I guess you'd say, a political-
Yeah.
-portion of that. Highway Safety Improvement, they've kind of gone to more of a systemic improvements, so they're more-
Right.
You know, citywide type thing instead of specific locations. Smart Scale really doesn't, sidewalks won't really work for Smart Scale.
So following up on that, with those changes, is there very much in the way of VDOT funding for sidewalks at this point? Because it sounds like they're shifting some of their focus in some of these programs.
There's not as much as there used to be. It's mainly through the transportation alternatives.
Okay, and that's the Regional Board with about 1.5 for the region, okay.
Yes.
And then how do we prioritize our applications in that process? I know, just as an example, and there are a number of other areas that have this type of situation, but if you're looking at the Craftsman Way development, and then the sidewalk on Boonsborough Road starts at James River Day School, what's that look like as we're prioritizing connecting different aspects of pre-existing sidewalks? Or how we approach that in the city with some of these decisions or applications?
So I'll start with like the Mill Race.
Yeah.
It's an industrial park. EDA, Economic Development Court, came to us and said, hey, can we apply for sidewalks? We've had requests from the businesses in our park that we put in sidewalks.
Yeah.
So that came through the EDA. Ones like on Nationwide Drive was a, we just, once again, we had businesses out there that requested sidewalks in their area. So it was something we applied for. How are they prioritized? It's more of what comes in, I guess, as, you know, but when we get requests for, we need sidewalks all along Leesville Road or all along Timberlake Drive, you know, Timberlake Road. It's like, well, that's such a huge project. There's no way we're going to be able to get funding for that.
Yeah.
Now, I prioritize, it's up to council.
Yeah, yeah. And then a kind of a couple of follow-ups. I'm sorry, I'm on the sidewalk train. Anybody else can hop on, you know, if you have questions. But, and I know there's a funding-dependent component. How is this working as far as with planning and development when it comes to the comprehensive plan and including some of that? Because one of the things in the interview process that we had kind of discussed was always, I'm the jurisdiction gal, what's government's role, what's not government's role? But with that, the transportation component. And so how we create elements of connectivity in the city and some of that through pedestrian traffic.
So, just to answer your question, how is it related to the comprehensive? How will it be addressed in the comprehensive plan? In the comprehensive plan, state code actually requires that there be a transportation element. And obviously sidewalks are a very important part of that. And I would think that during that process, we could prioritize certain areas of the city for sidewalk extensions or, you know, even new sidewalks. So that's one of the requirements, actually, for the plan, is to show where needed transportation improvements are and to develop cost projections for it. So, yes. Now, as far as the need for sidewalks, I think our current comprehensive plan, and I would assume our new revisions will, you know, will support the need for sidewalks, because not everyone has a car. There's multiple, you know, multi modes of transportation is what we call it. Whether you ride a bike, walk, take a bus. Because quite simply, the way of thinking has been in the past, and you can agree or disagree, is that we're not going to build our way out of our transportation problem, right? You can only put so many potatoes in a 50-pound bag. So you've got, so you try and give people a different way of moving about the city. And one way to do that is walking. And that might be for health benefit, it might be to get to and from a job, it might be for recreation, so, did that answer?
Yeah, I just like schedules. This is where, actually, Tim's gone. This is why I loved going through a lot of resources. And I know you do a lot of this as well, planning and development, but all the engineers have schedules for everything. It was wonderful. So when I'm looking at sidewalks, just me personally, I'm trying to think of what's our process as far as how we're adding on? Is there a way that we're weighing where we want to prioritize or not? And then how's that play into a transportation plan? I largely chose Rivermont, living off Rivermont, because of sidewalks. That was like a huge thing for me personally. So, again, I'm on the sidewalk train.
And I think the transportation element of the comp plan would be the best place to start in doing that.
That's great. I have one other, oh, go ahead. I gotta wash the time.
Yes, but when you're along streets like Leesville Road, you don't have the right-of-way. So you have to acquire right-of-way as well from the property owners. Some property owners have bushes and things out along the road that would have to be removed to be able to put sidewalks in. So there's, yes, there's a need, but there's also, everybody doesn't-
Yep, yep.
-want them either.
No, that's good. And that's really valuable, too, because that was something we discussed with the comprehensive plan as well, is my vision for Lynchburg could be very different from Mr. Deemer's vision for Lynchburg. So what's our role as government in enacting that and what's not, so that the citizens can create the city that they want? That's helpful. Thank you. One other question that I have has to do with private businesses or there's a church that I'm aware of where there's improvements taking place. How does that interplay with the requirement? And I'm not familiar with the specific code, but essentially to build a sidewalk that's on that property line, whether or not that connects, et cetera? And how do we enforce that, or what are the guidelines around that?
So Mr. Newland referenced it. Sidewalks are either required as part of a subdivision request, and that's on one side of the street unless it exceeds, I think it's 6,000 vehicle trips per day, which is never going to happen. So one side of the street, new residential subdivisions. For private development, so anything that's subject to a site plan review, which would be your multifamily residential, commercial, residential, or institutional, so the church that you're referring to. If it's a greenfield site, the ordinance requires that sidewalk be placed along in all street frontages. If it's an existing site, it's based on a development threshold, so amount of development per, in relation to the street frontage. So the ratio is you take the street frontage and you divide it by 100, and you multiply it by 15,000 square feet. And that tells you how much development you can do prior to needing to construct a sidewalk. And when that sidewalk, when that threshold is met, the sidewalk is required on the primary street frontage and the secondary street frontage of its multiple streets. Now, for developments that already exceed that threshold, the ordinance allows 5,000 square feet of additional development before they have to do anything. Because we know that there was a lot of developments that had already exceeded it. We wanted to allow them to expand, so they gave them a 5,000-square-foot grace period. Now, there are also exemptions, because we know that there are certain areas where sidewalk cannot be constructed. And that could be things like drainage areas, it could be topography, it could be the slope. So they can apply, people can apply for a sidewalk exception. The idea is that sidewalks will infill over time with city projects. It was first put in the ordinance in 2016, when the zoning ordinance was rewritten. At that time, it was, if you submitted a site plan, sidewalks are required. Council came back about a year or two later and asked to kind of ease it a little bit, and that's how the development threshold came into play.
Okay, that's helpful background. Thank you. What I'm trying to assess, and I have snippets of information, but this is helpful information. I'm talking about from constituent feedback. Again, I'm on the sidewalk train, but if somebody wants to develop and expand, and they have a business or an organization that's fairly isolated, and a sidewalk is being required because of that expansion, but it doesn't have any connectivity, and it likely wouldn't fall into a comp plant situation, I'm concerned that it's placing an undue burden that could limit expansion for those individuals. And so I don't know as far as the exemptions, if that's only physical obstructions, or if that also has to do with property isolation, if that makes sense, and how we could make sure that expansion and growth is protected while not undercutting the business or organization's ability to do that.
So the ordinance is really based upon physical constraints, not-
Right.
-property isolation. Again, the idea is to infill sidewalks over time and to give people the opportunity for different modes of transportation. Interestingly enough, the sidewalk that you referenced at James River Day School wanting to connect to was required as part of one of their building projects.
One of their, yeah.
And they obviously didn't want to do it, and then after they constructed it, they loved it, right? So it depends on how you want to look at it. To me, it is no different than requiring the extension of a water line or sewer line or a street widening. It's part of infrastructure that goes along with being located in the city. Do you necessarily need curb and gutter everywhere? No, we require it for stormwater. Do we want to give our citizens the ability to walk safely without having to walk in the road? So that's part of the reasoning behind it, yes.
That's helpful background. Thank you so much, Mr. Martin. Any other questions?
If hypothetically, an organization has five-foot of frontage on a road, it could be 100,000 acre development, but they got five foot. Is there a limit on the size that they have on the road? Or if it's five foot, one foot, you still got to build one foot? More curiosity question.
So hypothetically, I would say, yes, they would need to build one foot of sidewalk. Realistically, there aren't going to be any parcels with one or five feet of frontage because our ordinances don't allow for it. Now, I'll probably go back to my office and find that one.
That was more curiosity than indulging me.
But again, it's based on the threshold of development, if it's an existing development, yes.
And a question for Gayle. Thank you for coming, even though we haven't tasked you with a whole lot of questions. I've got one. If a sidewalk has an extreme amount of weeds growing up into it, what is your process for identifying and prioritizing weed reduction on sidewalks? Because I've seen some sidewalks that are really, with all the rain you've had, they're kind of crazy at this point. Need to be mowed or weed-eated or sprayed or something. What do you do?
Well, we've got a, we've got a weed group is what we call it. And so we will usually spray, kill the vegetation on the sidewalk. And oftentimes, we can take a, we just did one for you.
Yeah, thank you.
We can take a Bobcat sometime if the sidewalk is wide enough, or we go hand shovel and get the debris off of it. So if you see stuff like that out there, send us an email, a location, and we can put it on a list and get it taken care of.
Do you have a list of high priority that always grow, and you just work with those first?
Yes, they kind of have a list of problem sidewalks that they'll take care of and watch, so, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation. It was very helpful. Just a question. I'm just getting back to the Florida Avenue sidewalk. Now, when we built the Detention Center, it was before my time. I was here when it was finished, but the approval was before my time. So would we require to build sidewalks at that time period? Because I wasn't-
I would say that's a Tom Martin.
Look, I'm going to give you the- Look, I'm, I'm going to give you the, the real answer, whether it's popular or not. Yes, they should have been required to build the sidewalk. They did not do it. It was a city project. That's the only answer I can give you.
Yes, I appreciate it. And as far as when developers are coming, I'd heard at one point there might have been, they used the, they used as deterrent to some developments, saying that our sidewalk requirement was a deterrent to some people, to developments, because they had to do, build sidewalks. Is that, is that same pretty much similar in other counties or just like, because Lynchburg is more like a walkable city?
I think it varies from locality to locality on sidewalk requirements, but typically your urban cities.
Because we're more like, like Bethany County is more urban. We're rural, excuse me, rural and more urban. And I know, I remember when we did the, the water retaining water station or something, where we had, we were required to do a sidewalk or something, but it wasn't, it was just, it wasn't even.
Well, what they, what the city has done in some instances on, on city projects, like the water treatment facility on Concord Turnpike.
Yes, that's the one.
In lieu of installing it along Concord Turnpike, they installed it in other areas of the city. Right? Several years ago, as part of our, the city's legislative agenda, they tried to create a sidewalk pool where, like, they're in the hinterlands, they could pay into a fund, but it did not go through the general assembly.
Okay, I get you.
Is it a cash profit? Is that why?
Maybe it just never got anywhere.
Is it the same case where, where a developer, because there was another situation on, oh my gosh, I think Campbell Avenue, the part where the, it was, they were required to build a side, I received a call some time ago, they were required to build a sidewalk, but it was really a sidewalk that really didn't, didn't go to a street or something? So, is there, is there a process where the developer can request a petition to not do the sidewalk because there's no traffic at all or goes to nowhere?
Well, that's very similar to.
Something same thing, pretty much, yes.
Timmer was speaking of.
Yeah.
So, the, the answer is unless they meet a physical constraint, no.
Okay.
Because again, the premise is that they would infill over time.
Okay.
Sidewalks.
That's it. Thank you, appreciate it.
Very welcome.
Any other questions? All right, thank you all. With that meeting adjourned, appreciate everyone's time.
Praise the Lord. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our June 10th, 2025 work session, council work session. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Winterbender.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. We're going to get into our agenda. Agenda is about the budget work session. I have Gregory Patrick here with us and also Donna Witt should be close by. There she is right there. Okay, got her. We're going to walk you through some of the scenarios that have been proposed. But before we do that, I wanted to acknowledge at least if anything, get out and support your Hillcats this week. The playoffs are, it's interesting, you start in the beginning of the season and if you went out, that means something good. And if this week we have a home stand that if we went out, then we're in the playoffs. So, big news there. So again, plug in our baseball team. So Mayor, if you're okay, turn it right over to Mr. Patrick.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item that we will review today is a concept that Councilman Feraldi brought to us last week. It involves looking at lowering the car tax to a level where we almost eliminate it and then offsetting that decrease with an increase in the real estate tax rate to a level that would ultimately provide the same level of revenue that the city manager's proposed budget provided, but in a way that sort of changes who is ultimately, you know, funding some of the initiatives and how the tax policy is shaped and who is paying what. Whenever we get a very difficult question like this, we turn to budget staff or our data staff to run the numbers here and make sure we have all of our ducks in a row. Budget staff has been extraordinarily busy over the last couple of weeks getting ready to answer other council questions. So I asked our data staff to step in, Holly and Sean, to run through all of the scenarios, make sure we understood how everything worked, make sure we were still able to take advantage of the car tax relief funds, the Personal Property Tax Relief Act funds we get from the state, and provide an answer to Mr. Feraldi's question and kind of flesh out the concept he had. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Holly and Sean who are going to walk you through this information.
So anytime we have a data project before us, we want to make sure that we're fairly understanding what it is we're looking at. So I'm going to start us off by explaining how car tax works. It's known as the Personal Property Tax Relief Act of 1998. You'll hear people rattle off PPTRA. All those letters kind of running together, I need to know what they mean. And so it's one of our more complicated taxes. So I wanted to spend a few moments to explain it before Sean jumps into the data. So under the Personal Property Tax Relief Act, what qualifies for relief is a passenger car, motorcycle, pickup truck or panel truck owned by an individual up to a certain weight for trucks. What does not qualify for relief would be motorhomes, trailers, boats, farm use vehicles, or any vehicle used for business purposes more than 50% of the time if an individual owns the vehicle and no commercial vehicles. Mitch? The way that PPTRA relief formula works, and this is specific to Lynchburg because all of these numbers vary across the state. Our current tax rate is 3.8%, which amounts to $3.80 per every $100 of assessed value. We locally provide 100% tax relief on the first $1,000 of the vehicle's value. In 2026, there is a 30.64% tax relief on vehicle's value from $1,001 to $20,000. And there's no tax relief for the portion of a vehicle's assessed value over $20,000. So that's a lot of values that go into that formula. So for me, I really needed to be able to break that down using numbers. I needed to see the numbers to understand how that worked. So Mitch, if you would go to the next slide. This explains those numbers more thoroughly. If you see in the first column, that's the value of the vehicle. And then the next column would be the total tax on that vehicle. The next column over is the local tax relief. So as you see for the first value of $1,000, we locally provide 100% relief for any vehicle valued at $1,000 or less. So that person would pay no taxes on that vehicle. At $20,000, the total tax would be 760. There's no local tax relief on that. But the PPTRA tax relief is provided at 30.64%. So that's the amount of relief you see in that column. So the next column over is the amount you would pay with that relief, which is $527.14. So on a $20,000 vehicle, that's what you would pay, is $527.14. It gets a little more complicated when you get to vehicles that are valued more than $20,000. So on a $30,000 vehicle, the first $20,000 of that $30,000 gets that 30% tax break at that $232.86. So you're paying $527.14 on the first $20,000. The additional $10,000 value of that vehicle is taxed at 100%. So you're paying $3.80 on that $10,000 of the $30,000. When you combine the $527 and the $380, the total tax amount for that vehicle is $907.14. And then on forward with the $40,000, you get a 30% tax reduction on the first $20,000 and then the $20,000 left over, you're paying 100% tax on that vehicle. So again, a little more complicated. So I wanted to kind of give you a picture of what that looks like in numbers. Mitch, if you would go to the next slide. The way PPTRA relief works for localities, counties, cities and towns are reimbursed by the Commonwealth for providing that required personal property tax relief. So because we provide tax relief, we get reimbursement from the state. In 2006, the Commonwealth established that the state will pay a total sum of $950 million for each tax year in reimbursement to locality. So that's the total amount. That reimbursement is based on a proportion of actual payments to a city based on the year 2005. So we receive 5.5 million of PPTRA reimbursements for providing tax relief based on that 2005 number. So that 5.5 million never changes. If our population decreases or increases, it doesn't matter. The 5.5 million remains the same as long as we're providing relief. Next slide. So this was the proposed tax relief formula. The tax rate would decrease from 380 to 130 per every $100 of assessed value. There would be 100% tax relief from it going from $1,000 to $20,000 for a vehicle's value. And no tax relief for the portion of a vehicle's assessed value over $20,000. So that wouldn't change. That would stay the same. And we would still be eligible for the 5.5 million from the state because we're still providing tax relief. Again, I needed to see this in numbers to make it make sense to me. I'm a numbers person. So Mitch, if you would go to the next slide. So this would be an example of that proposed tax structure. So you can see again, on a $1,000 vehicle, that doesn't change. Changes significantly for a $20,000 vehicle. That person previously paid $527 in taxes on that vehicle. They would, with this proposed plan, pay nothing in taxes. And then for the $30,000 and $40,000 vehicles, you would see they would pay nothing on the first $20,000 and pay a reduced tax rate on the additional amount above that first $20,000. So you can see for a $30,000 vehicle where a person previously paid $907, that would be reduced to 130. Pretty significant reduction. Sean ran some numbers using census data and under, or using our actual tax data. And under the proposed plan, that would impact 45,500 vehicles versus the 5,500 that were at 100% previously. So that would be a significant increase in the amount of people that would be receiving that tax relief. Mitch? And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Sean to talk about how that variance would impact overall numbers.
Yep. So we wanted to take that scenario and we kind of want to ask ourselves a series of questions. How does this affect our revenue? How does it affect the citizens of Lynchburg? But then also, how does it affect property owners in the city of Lynchburg? And so on the first topic of the revenue, you'll see here on the screen that the proposed PPT rate would reduce revenue by about $14 million. So you see the current, in the current proposed budget, the revenue is expected to be $22 million. Under this new structure, the revenue would be $8 million. So it would be a decrease in $14 million of revenue from reducing the personal property tax rate. Next slide, please. And then, so to make up for that $14 million, there's a couple of different scenarios. And then one of the scenarios that we landed on dealt with increasing the real property rate, the lodging rate, as well as the lodging room fee. And the goal here was to make up that $14 million of deficit. And so under this scenario, you'd increase the real property rate from 89 cents to $1.25, which would increase about, or generate about $12 million in revenue. Increase the lodging tax from 6.5% to 8.5%, which is about $1 million in revenue. Then that nightly room fee would increase from $1 to $3, which is another $866,000 in revenue for a total revenue of about $14,150,000. And now, yeah, thank you. Sorry. So the other thing that we wanted to take a look at is, you know, how does this affect some of our citizens, the people who live in the city of Lynchburg? So if you remember from our winter retreat, it seems like it was a long time ago, but it was only six months ago. There's 50% of our households in the city of Lynchburg, according to the census, are renter occupied. 83% of those renter occupied houses have at least one vehicle, either owned or leased. And then based on our numbers that we received from Mitch's office, the average vehicle is valued at about $10,000. And that's $264 a year in PPT tax at the current time. So if we look at the breakdown of the number of households based on the number of cars that they have, about 6,500 renter households, which is about 45% of the renter households in the city, have one vehicle. So on average, they could see a savings annually of about $264. Looking at two vehicles, there's about 4,200 households with renter occupied, that are renter occupied and have two vehicles. That's about 28% of the entire renter household stock. And they could see potentially an average saving of $528 a year. And going beyond renters, we also wanted to take a look at homeowners. And so we wanted to break out the homeowners into kind of just ranges of homeowner, home assessed values for single family residential properties. 81% of the single family residential properties in the city of Lynchburg are assessed below $300,000. 91% of the single family residential households or properties in Lynchburg are assessed below $400,000. So another way of looking at this table is 91.5% of the homeowners in Lynchburg would pay a maximum of $4,100 a year in real estate taxes under the proposed PPT reduction scenario. Under the original proposed budget, it'd be about $3,560 maximum. That was just looking at the real estate rate itself. What we wanted then do is look at the real estate rate plus different vehicle scenarios. So over the next couple of slides, we're going to look at a house value, which you can see at the top of this slide. Then also that house with, say, two $10,000 cars or two $30,000 cars. So you can see with a $100,000 house and two $10,000 cars, the PPT reduction scenario we're talking about today comes in at about $1,025 total for the year in taxes across those two taxes. Original proposed budget is about $1,400. And we also provided the amount for the equalization rate, whether that's a flat equalization or a two-year equalization rate number. For $30,000, two $30,000 vehicles and a $100,000 house, you'll see that the PPT reduction scenario comes in at about $1,200 a year, for about $1,300 a year. Under the original proposed budget, that would be $2,704. And again, equalization, both scenarios are there as well.
So we can stop, stop here for just a second. And just to, just to reiterate, if we're looking at these slides, here's important. Takeaways, and that is, if you own a $100,000 home and you have two vehicles and those vehicles are at the average cost or value of $10,000 each. Under this car tax plan, you would actually pay almost, about $250 less per year in total taxes when you're combining real estate and car tax than you would under an equalized tax rate. If you had two cars valued at $30,000, you would actually be paying almost $1,300 less in total taxes than you would under an equalized tax rate and the current car tax.
Next slide.
Yes. So where does the increase from assessment factor into this? Because we're making rate comparison to rate comparison and value comparison to value comparison. Because if that $100,000 house was previously valued at $50,000 and it's got 100% increase, that, there's a whole piece of this in the information and the analysis that's missing that doesn't...
There's nothing missing. If you look at the equalized tax rate.
Sure.
And you have a $100,000 house and you do the math. That, say that house is worth $100,000 now. This is based on current assessments. So what it used to be worth is irrelevant. But what it's worth now is $100,000. These, this is the math. With two $10,000 cars, you'd be paying about $250 less in this plan. With two $30,000 cars, you'd be paying $1,300 less per year.
So I don't think that it's irrelevant, what it used to be worth, because that represents an increase. Because the equalization at .767 accounts for what percentage difference? What was the percentage difference going from the 89 to the .767 for the total real estate? Was it 20 something, 20?
I don't know. I mean, it's around 20%.
20%, right? So if you had a house that was previously valued at $50,000 and now it's valued at $100,000, that's 100% increase. So that's the piece that's missing because residential was impacted at a much higher rate than commercial was. That's known, right? So, and the other piece that's missing in this whole analysis, and I'm just pointing it out, is you're not even factoring in, I actually just sent a text message to somebody that's got a massive complex to find out how many units they have and look at their assessment value. You're not even factoring in, when you go back to the renter and showing what the renters were, $264, whatever the savings was, the rent's going to go up. Because the landlord's going to pass that property tax, real estate tax increase right off onto the renter.
So we're factoring that in. It's just later in the presentation.
Okay, let's keep going.
And I will tell you, this is based on current assessed values. So if your house is currently worth $100,000, this is your reality if we were to do this, right? If, if your house is worth, you know, 219, which is the average or the median, we're going to get to that on the next couple of slides.
Next slide, Mitch.
So the same scenario with the median household, which is $219,100. Again, $10,000 vehicle and a $30,000 vehicle, $230,000 vehicles. You'll see under the current proposed PPT reduction plan that it's about $2,246 annually compared to the original proposed budget and both equalization proposed budgets or options. And with a $30,000, $230,000 vehicle household, it's about $2,506, which is less than the original in both equalization scenarios. The final scenario that we ran is a $400,000 house, again, with two $10,000 cars and two $30,000 cars. You'll see that there underneath the PPT Reduction Act, it's about a little bit higher than the original in both equalization options. As your value of your car's increased, so in the $30,000, $230,000 vehicle scenario, you'll see that it comes in a little bit less than the other options. So the other thing we wanted to look at is how will this affect hotel owners? So hotel owners would see an average increase in real property tax of just shy of $10,000 annual. If we look at the maximum increase, the maximum assessed hotel property in the city, they would see an increase of about $24,165 annually. Then if you look at the combined percent of taxes and fees per room on a typical $164 room, you're looking at an increase from 7.11% to about 10.33% per night.
So one of the, one of the takeaways here is, is if we, if council considers this plan, one of the things that we should take into consideration is if we went forward with this plan and also an adjustment to the lodging taxes, it may seem like we're double dipping to any hotel owners. And we may want to be very careful about the level of increase in any lodging tax as a result.
We also wanted to take a look at how this would affect those multifamily residential properties. So these are your apartment complexes. There's about 300, just over 300 of those properties in the city of Lynchburg. And you can see that the value of those properties range pretty drastically. So the median comes in at about $812,000, but the average is well over $3 million. So a lot of variance in the values there. But you can see that they would see an increase on average of about, or on average, they would pay $32,720 a year in real property tax. And for the maximum example, it's about $691,000 a year.
So in these, in multifamily developments, you would definitely expect, maybe not immediately, but, but over time, that, that this would cause rents to creep up. I, I mean, I don't think there's any way to, to think otherwise. But for the most part, the savings that renters would experience because of the personal tax or the personal property, the car tax reduction is going to outweigh the rent increase you could expect to see, especially initially, because there are leases signed, right? So renters are going to benefit significantly, especially initially. But then as leases need to be resigned, as new renters move in, that benefit will decrease over the next two to three years likely. But still end up as a overall net benefit to renters, most renters.
Next slide, please. So we took a look at the same, for, for commercial properties across the city of Lynchburg. So there's about 2,200, about 2,300 of those properties in the city of Lynchburg. So there's about 2200, about 2300 of those properties in the city of Lynchburg. Again, really varying ranges of values there with the median at about 232,000, the average at 825,000, and then we provided the breakout there at both the median and the average And then we looked at the same for industrial, which really kind of follows the same trends as the last two classifications, and that's about 450 properties across the city of Lynchburg.
So Mr. Misch, Councilman Mischens, these are some of the questions that, that you had asked in an email, so we'll, we'll run through here, and it was, and Donna, if I missed anything, I would encourage you to, to chime in. How would the proposed real estate tax rate increase affects, affect housing demand and home sales compared to the equalization rate? The nearest comparison I think that we can look at is really interest rates and what's happened over the last three or four years with interest rates. The interest rates have increased from, what, near three, almost under two, under three in 2022 to between six and seven now, and we've seen almost no decrease in demand for housing. So I, I can tell you, I don't think there would be, and it's, and Donna and I had talked about this, we wouldn't expect there to be a measurable increase or decrease in demand for housing as a result of, of the rate change at all, over equalization.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That doesn't factor supply though, because the supply of housing has changed drastically in that time period you're discussing with the, with the, we have, we have a supply shortage. So you have to, if you're going to talk about the demand, you also have to talk about the supply.
So we have a supply, massive supply shortage?
That's what, that's what I'm saying, but we haven't always had a massive supply shortage, so...
So if, if we didn't used to have a supply shortage and we do now...
We don't have a supply shortage. That's, that's, we do have a supply shortage, excuse me.
Right, so if we didn't used to have a supply shortage and we do now...
So I guess you're speaking to the interest rates, right? As your comparison of this, we've also got very tight supply, so the demand is based off the supply. That's one of the reasons the values are up, right?
It is, but the interest rate, the change in the interest rate, and the reason that is a reasonable comparison is because it made housing more expensive, right?
Okay.
And in the current housing market, we have had a shortage of demand, you know, going back before, before COVID. So we acknowledge there's a shortage of demand now, there was a shortage of demand, you know, in the last three, four, five, six years. If making housing more expensive through increasing interest rates didn't have an impact on demand, which, which is, and that interest rate increase, increased the cost of housing multiples of times larger than this, than the equalization rate, moving away from the equalization rate would, we wouldn't expect any decrease in demand if we moved from equalization to some other rate.
I think we're, I think we're disconnected in the way the question is being understood. I think that's why I'm continuing to ask questions, and the question that it, that really is here is, what's it going to do to supply? Because how many multifamily developments have we approved since we equalized and went lower, right? My question is, what's going to happen to the supply when we make it more expensive for developers to buy land and develop land and build these complexes if we make it more expensive for them to do their business? Because I've had developers tell us, as long as we're doing what we're doing with the real estate taxes, they're going to keep looking for land in the city. They went out to the county. They went out to the county, but we've been approving stuff left and right in the city, large complexes, right? So if we were to raise the real estate rates and make it more expensive to do that, are they going to go back out to the county, which would then create potentially another supply shortage here by making it too expensive for developers who do these multifamily complexes? That's the question that I, does that make sense?
It does, and I would insert the, the same way. We, we have a massive housing shortage in the city, and I think you see that...
Sure.
Through the, the number of requests we have for rezoning, the requests we have to build multifamily housing. I don't, and you asked staff, right? And, and we're trying to give the best answer that we, that we could. I don't think, and Donna and I have discussed this ad nauseam, to make sure we were giving good, that we were in agreement, I don't think it would have any impact on supply.
Did you talk to any real estate brokers?
You asked for staff's opinion?
Sure.
We're giving that to you.
Okay.
Right? It would have, we, we do not believe it would have any impact on supply or any impact on demand. The real estate tax rate is the level of, the impact to the cost of housing from this increase in the real estate tax rate is very, very small when compared to the increase in the cost of borrowing, both for a, an individual buying a home and for developers developing homes. And that increase in the interest rate has not slowed down development or the production of housing at all, nor has it slowed down the demand for individual housing. So we wouldn't expect this to have any impact on those, in those areas either. And that, I mean, that's the best answer, short of going to an economist and, and asking the question, that's the best, that's the best answer that we as staff can, can, can provide. I, I mean, the, the Lynchburg market is much more unique than if we looked at the country as a whole, right? And we just don't, we don't experience the same macroeconomic trends that the country would based on smaller kind of economic demand features like changing real estate tax rate. And if we moved on to the next one, what impact would the rate increase have on the local economic growth, including jobs, constructions, and construction versus equalization? Again, we, we don't think it would have a meaningful or material impact.
Yes, sir.
How was my presentation when you asked this question? Because there's a lot of questions here, and I think it'd be important to have all those at least answered and then offer...
Yes, sir. I'll finish your presentation.
Excellent. How might the rate increase lower home values? Again, what we've seen is sufficient demand, that we don't think this would have a material impact on, on home values. How would reduced home values affect residents' wealth, especially for low-income and minority homeowners compared to equalization? We don't think that the real estate tax rate increase would have a material impact on the demand or the value of homes, so it would have, we, we would expect no material impact on wealth. And how does eliminating the car tax and relying more on real estate taxes increase exposure to market fluctuations? And how does keeping the car tax with equalization help? Again, we wouldn't, we wouldn't expect a material impact in, in any of these areas.
Yes, sir.
So takeaways, I believe this is the last slide. So who benefits from this plan? We would expect more residents of Lynchburg will benefit from reduction in car tax than would benefit from a reduction in real estate tax. Quite frankly, more people own cars than they, than own, than own homes. Renters will benefit the most in the short term. Ultimately, over, you know, two, three, four years, increases in rent that probably would not have otherwise occurred will, will catch up a little bit, but we still expect renters to benefit overall. And then homeowners, especially those who own more expensive vehicles or who own more vehicles, would likely benefit the most. And who does not benefit, right? Commercial property owners, hotel owners, if both real estate and lodging taxes increase, and then multifamily residential owners. So bottom line here is this, this plan shifts some of the tax burden in the city from residents to our commercial business and property owners. I mean, and that's the bottom line. And I think that's all we have.
Mr. Faraldi.
Mitch, you can go back four or five slides, I'm not sure which one it was. Slow down for me. Go to the 219 one if you don't mind. Thank you. So, to put it differently Greg, what I'm hearing is under this scenario, so the average family of $220,000 with two cars valued at the average, which is 10,000 each, they would actually pay more, albeit $35, more in taxes to the city under an equalized tax rate than under the no-car tax plan. Is that correct? Even though it's like 35 bucks?
It's, I think it's 35 bucks the other way. So you have two $10,000 cars, you have a $219,000 home, then under the equalized tax rate, you would pay $36 less.
Okay.
Essentially the same.
Essentially the same. So, here's where I landed. This gets the city what is needed based off of the proposed budget and offers tax relief. To my colleagues, there have been many emails flying between us, trying to figure out a plethora of issues. One line that was shared by one of us was, there's likely no opportunity for any relief at all in this budget. That was before this was shared. This offers relief to, to families and residents. This does it. And everything that's been proposed, if you were to vote for that, is taken care of. Step pay for, for teachers, firefighters, police officers, the capital funding for schools, the pool, the library, 3% for city employees, I mean, every element, nothing has to be So simply put, this is a no-brainer in my mind. I've run the numbers myself, and this would equate to about a, about a $35 tax cut for myself. So then I got thinking, I'm like, okay, on top of all this, we've, a lot of people have just started paying their real estate, I'm sorry, their car tax. So what happens there? How does that impact and what does that, what opportunity might that give us over the next 365 days, understanding where people have been paying their tax and how that might play out?
So one of the things, one of the most challenging things about this proposal, and I think we talked about this, is there's a lot of procedural items that we would need to work through, one of which is that the car tax is assessed on a calendar year basis and the budget's run on a fiscal year basis. So what that ultimately means is, we are about, we would be about six months ahead in, in revenue from, from car tax in the fiscal year 2026 budget if we moved forward with this. So what it would likely do is give us an opportunity to find other tax, other temporary tax relief in the FY 2026 budget to offset that additional revenue that the collections timing creates for us, which would mean potentially another year of...
So let me summarize and regurgitate. The city would have already collected but-so much, and that would be more, likely more than what it's designed for under this plan, just given the calendar. But what I'm hearing is it would offer an opportunity where for the next year, there would be no trash fee, we could cut that out, and you'd also remove the vehicle tag as well. So that's another $150 in savings. Actually more like 170.
Yes, you could, for, for another year.
For the next year, I, I understand that, but $10 a month plus 30, how much is it? 36?
Thirty or 35, depending on the way.
Thank you Mitch. So it's $120 off the bat, plus another 35, 30 on the low end. It's another 150 bucks. So even to the person who, who has the average house and two average cars, even though they're paying $35 more, we've just now cut another 135 bucks. They've now got a tax break of $100.
Yep.
I hope, I hope you're tracking where I'm going with this. This is a no-brainer in my book, and we should do it.
Ms. Tillman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, I have a couple of questions, I have some for you, Mr. Patrick, I have some for you, Mr. Faraldi, but just to clarify, on the car tax and trash tags, just what you're referencing is essentially paying back a surplus of what would be from decreasing. So it's not a, it's not an additional savings, it's actually paying back, I, okay, paying back what's already been paid to the city. So it's not a, an additional savings based on this chart, if I'm understanding your point correctly? Yeah?
Yes, but it's not the faults of the city, it's just given the calendar.
No, correct, and I, I'm not saying it is, I just want to clarify that, that that funding isn't additional savings in regards to this chart, it's paying back because it was already paid in advance with the calendar year.
It's a timing.
Yeah, correct, okay, that's great. What, and, and I'm sorry, this may have been included on the slides already, so feel free to direct to which slide this would be, but we were talking about essentially a shift of $14 million. So what would be the projected city revenue with equalization, and what would be the projected city revenue with the, shifting the personal property tax?
So, the personal property tax plan provides the same level of revenue than is in the proposed budget. Equalization provides about $10 million?
Less.
In less revenue. So there is $10 million in, $10 million more in revenue in the personal property in, in this plan than there would be in an equalized budget.
Okay, so with the equalized budget, we're still receiving more revenue from the actual revenue of the previous fiscal year. With this budget, it adds an additional 10 million, which is essentially transferring that tax somewhere else in the budget. So that, this is in no way reaching equalization when it comes to a cut. This can't be called a cut, and it can't be called tax relief, because it's an additional $10 million in revenue.
More residents would pay less money in taxes under this plan than they would under an equalized tax rate plan.
So it's a tax burden shift?
It's, yes.
It's a tax burden shift, okay.
So it's, it's moving some of the responsibility for paying taxes from the residents to the, to the commercial sector, essentially.
Okay. My, my other question, when this came up, and this is a question for you, Mr. Faraldi, has to do with the education composite index, because I think we're all on the same page, we really want to protect school funding, I know you've talked about that a great deal. With the composite index, as far as how the state assesses our local apportionment and the monies we receive from the state, the real estate tax rate is the heaviest weight in that formula. And so, my, my question and my concern is, if we transfer this revenue, that it could artificially inflate what is considered the city's ability to pay. And so, it would effectively decrease Virginia State's pay into the public schools, and how that would affect the schools. Does that make any sense? So the composite, you're tracking, but the composite index, the formula for how the state determines the apportionment of funding that comes from the state to the schools would likely be inflated because there'd be a transference of city revenue into the portion that's the greatest weight in that formula in the budget. So have you asked about that? And if so, do you have the written response of, of how that would impact Lynchburg City schools?
Mayor, may I respond?
Yes.
I thought of that, and then I didn't, because at the end of the day, the city is still getting the dollars, whether it's from car or real estate, the burden of the taxpayer is still there. And so therefore, the city is getting the dollars it needs to balance out whatever the index is enrichment for school funding. The city still gets the dollars, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I'm tracking that this...
The rate, the rate isn't as important as the amount of money that is collected.
The amount of money from the real estate... The amount of money from the real estate portion of the revenue in the budget is what's...
It's still coming from real estate. It's the same amount. Whether it's 76 or $102.5, it's this, I mean, the, I'm sorry, 89 or $102.5.
It's, the local composite index is based on the assessed value, not the tax rate.
Right.
So it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have an impact on LCI.
Right.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to say.
Okay, so it's on assessed value, it's not rate, and it's not revenue?
No. It's, it's economic factors, so it's going to be, I just had it up. It's the assessed value of, it's the true value of real property. That's, so that's the assessed value. That's 50% of the weight. Then it's adjusted gross income, which is weighted 40%, then it's taxable retail sales. This, this plan wouldn't change any of those.
Okay.
In theory.
That's, that's helpful. Thank you.
What else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Timmer.
Since Mr. Knuckles has been here and we've asked for him, I would love to just hear him share his thoughts on how this would impact what he does, since he's the car tax guru, which he loves that name, I'm sure. Thank you for coming.
Hey, you're welcome. Thanks for having me. I mean, really, in my mind of work, it's going to be the same. I'm still assessing the tax. What's changing is the rate. So as far as what I do every day, it's going to be the same function. And one of my concerns was over the license fee, the local license fee, which is the 29.50 or 34.50, depending on the weight. Because we eliminate 40,000, 45,000 bills, but if we assess the license fee, those citizens would still be getting a bill. So that, that was a concern of mine, was the license fee. And then, you know, both gubernatorial candidates have made a claim that they're willing to look at eliminating. One said she's going to eliminate it, and the other one said she's looking at working with the other folks to get it to be eliminated. So I worry a little bit about those plans and how that would have an impact. If we change the way we do the car tax, it may have a negative impact on how much revenue flows to the locality once those plans are presented. So that's, that's my two concerns. And the other concern is if you eliminate the tax on vehicles under 20, I mean, this is my fear. You have an individual or a family that has several vehicles under 20,000. And after 10 years or so, paying that vehicle off, they decide to purchase a new vehicle. And then, you know, you get the surprise from the commission of revenue and buildings and collections, you get a bill in your mailbox. And, you know, and that hadn't happened in eight or nine years, that's a concern. And like I say, it's not a real concern until you're the one that gets the bill. And then it's a problem, and, you know, that's concerning to me. And that's my thoughts on it.
I think we've got a lot of variables out there, and we've got a lot of unknown potential unintended consequences. The gubernatorial race is definitely, we have two different candidates proposing similar things with the car tax. We don't know specifics yet. All that can change. Probably one or more of them will implement some kind of plan. And this plan has no ability to, to predict and to plan for what may or may not happen. So all of this is kind of out in a nebulous to me and could be really impacted by what happens in November and who takes the, who moves into the mansion in Richmond in January. So it seems like a not the best time. Here we are in the last stages of a budget process that we've been working on for quite a while. But we've heard from hundreds, maybe thousands of citizens, and the vast majority of them have spoken against taxes. And the vast majority of those have spoken against the real estate tax. And I got a question, maybe that somebody can hopefully answer for me. At that, what is the real estate tax you're proposing, a dollar for fifty?
For the record, I'm not proposing a real estate rate. I ask, what would it take to make this work?
Okay. Well, your plan has a rate. What is the rate?
Again, I haven't proposed a plan, Kurt.
Okay. Well, you know, is it the dollar?
1.025.
Yeah, 1.02. Where would that put us in the state as far as how we compare with other localities in Virginia?
It'd be below Roanoke and still below Harrisonburg.
Okay.
And Trensburg.
Yeah, we rerun the Virginia 15, but I'm thinking it's, it's...
Would that change our rating?
No, no, the, it would not have an impact on our, on our credit rating.
Well, the last question for you, and then unless somebody else has a question for Commissioner of the Revenue, who is the guru. In your measure, given the uncertainty of the political environment and everything, is now a good time to try out this even more convoluted plan? We finally got people understanding housing assessment rates versus the city's real estate rate and how that creates an equation that creates how much they pay. Finally starting to figure that out. And now we're throwing in a whole lot more numbers and moving, transitioning from one group of people, the car owners. I hate the car tax as much as anybody. It's a very hated tax, no doubt about it. I worked real hard to try to eliminate it, working for Governor Gilmore. But it's just, it's just a shell game. We're moving it over here to the homeowners and apparently the business people. Is it a good time to be trying to do something like this?
I'm an administrator, so with council enacts, I'm going to administer that plan. And it's just, really, the only fear I have is if a plan comes out and it's tied to a amount of revenue, if we've reduced the amount of revenue we're getting for car tax, that may well have a negative impact.
And we'll be back here trying to figure it out all over again. All right. Unless somebody else has questions?
Mr. Faraldi has something for you. Yes, thank you for the information and presentation. I really appreciate it. Now, we have gone back and forth on so many issues and scenarios, and we continue to do scenarios. I do like the information that it does mention that it does give more of a broader tax relief for more residents, because more persons own vehicles versus real estate. So I do, I do appreciate that it gives more residence in our community some tax relief. So I do appreciate that. I was concerned about the timing of it, if the city could get it done by July the 1st, so that was a concern. So I guess we need to hear about the scenario. If we do something like this, what would that look like as far as, is it doable during this time period?
I, I think we're still working through what that process would look like. There are some process concerns. We need to work with the city attorney's office to see what plan, what plan of action we would need to take to get there. I think before we put into place that formal plan, we just want to understand if there's, you know, four of you guys that would be supportive of this. And if that's the case, then, then, then we can, we can figure out the most effective path to implement it.
To me, it's more of a, see, as we was talking the last time, more of a compromise in various levers that we have and what levels we can use to give a little bit of something to everyone, whether tax relief, whether it's this, whether it's that. You know, so it's more of a compromise to me and supporting all of our residents and giving them some relief and how they can do that in a more efficient way. Thank you.
I just wanted to submit for the record that, you know, if we do nothing, it would be a $22 million problem for us to figure out if Richmond toys with it. Now it's a $8 million problem. I mean, it's, it's no, of no consequence to me that two politicians are proposing getting rid of a tax rate, which has been proposed to get rid of for decades and hasn't gone anywhere. There are lobbying agencies that came into my office when I worked down there, left and right, that would not support this. So at least from my assessment, Mr. Mayor, I'm not saying they're liars. They might try, but they have to get through 100 delegates and 40 senators and about 2, 2,500 lobbyists to make that a reality. So that's just my opinion on what the governors may or may not do.
Okay, Mr. Mitch.
Mr. Mayor, two things. So one, just to be clear, what's the total tax burden shift, Mr. Patrick?
I think it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of nine and a half. So I don't, I don't know that we could quantify how much would go from residents to the commercial sector. But there would be a, a, there would be a shift. It would probably be more than $10 million.
So it's the, what's the, what's the total amount of the penny? It's 907?
907.
So 102.5 minus 89, 102.5 minus 89 equals 13.5 times 907123. So that's 12.2 million dollars.
I think Sean had that on his first slide.
Was that, was that out there? Okay. So we're moving 12...
One of his first slides. There you go. Well, go back one more. There you are.
That's exactly, yeah, that's the exact number I just got, the 12.2 million. So, so we're looking at shifting 12.2 million dollars of personal property tax on depreciating assets to real estate, which is an appreciating asset. So that's something that goes up over time, where the depreciating asset in the, in the vehicle is something that value decreases over time.
Keep, keep in mind that while individual vehicles depreciate over time, the overall value of the automobile stock that's subject to taxation tends to increase over time, because people turn over their vehicles substantially faster than they turn over their homes.
So that's another point that you just made that was, I was going to get to. People turn over their vehicles faster than they turn over their homes, meaning vehicles are more liquid, right? So in a pinch, you know, you bite off more than you can chew by buying a more expensive vehicle. And you get that bill in the mail, right, that you talked about? You can turn around and you can sell it a little quicker than you can unload your house. So that is something else that's a factor to consider in here is when we're shifting this burden, we're taking it away from something that is more liquid and something that is a depreciating asset. People have a choice. They have a choice what, you know, they can choose to buy an expensive vehicle, buy a less expensive vehicle, whatever it is, right? People tend to stay in their homes for decades, right? Many folks tend to stay in their homes for a long time. So the question I have for you, Mr. Knuckles, Commissioner Knuckles, is, so when we're looking at that 12.2 million dollar number, if there was something that came from the state that was some kind of formula to try to get rid of this, are you suggesting that there's a possibility, if it was state-driven from state revenues, that that would essentially fill the pot for us, that to replace that revenue, is that how that may work?
Really, all I can go on is when Governor Gilmore passed the initial plan.
Okay.
And that was basically, his plan was to eliminate the car tax.
Okay.
And what, it wasn't promised, but what was felt like was the state was going to cover the cost for the localities.
Okay.
So eventually, the, the tax would go away and the state would be covering the revenue loss to the localities. And, and if that's the same method that's followed here, if it happens, and I do, I agree, because, you know, they've got to find $3 billion. And, you know, the state just doesn't have $3 billion laying around. But if it's adopted along the Gilmore lines, if we're only collecting 8 million instead of 22 million, all the states got to get back to the locality as the 8 million as opposed to 22.
So, so, so then what that would potentially do, if it was under the Gilmore plan that's been previously, you know, I guess the last historical piece of information that we have of trying to accomplish this, if we shift the 12.2 million to real estate, and then a Gilmore-type plan were to come back through the state legislature, then we will have permanently shifted that tax burden to real estate, where it may have been a burden that was covered by an increase in state revenue. Am I understanding that?
Well, in my opinion, yes, because then you wouldn't have the personal property tax at all. And, I mean, depending on the funding formula that, that comes back to the locality, it may well be 8 million as opposed to the 22.
So, so it would be getting 8 million from the state if we, you know, under the Gilmore plan, right, the way it's been previously attempted. We would get 8 million from the state if we shift this over to real estate instead of 22 million. And then, and then the local taxpayers, the local real estate owners that are paying those taxes on the real estate would get stuck with that, you know, burden shift potentially, I would imagine. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for sharing that. Thank you for, thank you for all you do.
Hey, you're welcome.
It's an important job. So the next question I have is, can we go back to the slide on the, on the renters? So I did a little quick math here on an apartment complex in Ward 4. I just got some feedback on the number of units they have. They've got a proposed, right now, if you adopted the 102.5 rate, right, the real estate rate that accompanies with this plan, that would equate to a $381 increase per apartment in that complex. Right? So if you have one car per apartment unit, there would be a direct cost of $381 to the landlord per unit for a 225-unit apartment complex, which means one person in an apartment with one car, or two people, however that works with one car, they're looking at a rent increase because the landlord's not going to absorb that. And that's based off the assessment change on that complex, right? And they would actually be out, what is that, 381 minus about 120 bucks a year? So to say that this would just automatically help renters more than homeowners across the board, I don't know if that's the case, because there's too many variables here. The, the issue here is we're still looking at the same revenue, and I appreciate what you brought up, Ms. Timmer, on that. So we're shifting a burden. I don't, I don't see any tax relief with this. We're shifting a burden. What we're doing is we're taking money from one place and moving it to another place. So we're going to charge people less over here for this and more over here for that. So what we essentially do is we tell, we tell the taxpayers, like, hey, you know what? You're being penalized for owning real estate. And, and you're, you know, you're getting a break if you own a car. I'd love to get rid of the real, or the, the, the car tax. And if we can come up with a plan that gets rid of it without raising the real estate rate at all, I'm all in. I would be, I would be for it. But right now, the way this is shown and presented, it would be a 34% increase to our real estate tax rate. The reason I asked a question, if you talk to any brokers, I talked to some brokers yesterday, and, and they said that this would be devastating. This would be absolutely devastating to the real estate market. An increase like that in the rate. And I can, I can tell you from my personal experience, because I've actually owned real estate in the city for, I think, 14 years now, I watched the value of my house in a unique neighborhood that is several blocks from the county line, where the city-county line runs right through my neighborhood. When Campbell County equalized the real estate tax and the Democrats that used to be in charge of Lynchburg City Council didn't, very similar house, same style, same square footage, same acreage, on the other side of the line, their value went up, my value stayed flat. I watched it happen year after year. It's part of the total cost ownership, right? Their value went up, my value remained flat. As the Democrats raised the real estate tax and made it more expensive to own a home, the values of the homes were suppressed because of the real estate tax rate. And, you know, I, I just can't, I can't see how a 34% increase to the real estate rate is going to be any good. You know, we're approving multi... You know, we're approving multifamily complexes, townhomes, condos, all sorts of stuff, right? I'm scared that that stuff's going to move back out into the counties like it used to. That's what it did before. When they were raising the real estate tax rates, a lot of that development moved out to the counties. Now that we've done what we've done, they're coming back in. So, um, again, if we can reduce spending and elim, actually eliminate the burden instead of shift it, I'm all in. But there's no reduction in spending with this proposal, and this is just kind of a bait and switch, if you ask me.
Mr. Farady?
So, uh, there was so much there, but Mayor, I would say to my colleague, his assessment stayed flat is because we do it every two years and Campbell County does it every four.
Has nothing to do with it.
Mayor, I would respectfully request that Councilman-
Point of order, he's making an assumption about my statement. We shouldn't be assuming to the motives of other members, he's making an assumption about my statement, it's so false.
And I would like to point out that this has been a cordial discussion. And the moment I try to rebut, I get cut off. There's only a few apartment complexes in the ward I represent, Mr. Mayor, that would equate to that type of an increase. And they certainly would be coming from a, probably a Langley company, if not some others. All of which donated heavily to members of this dais. I'm going to ask Council to put every political connection aside. Whether it's your donors, your political party, solely focus for once, just on the folks you represent. This is the opportunity for a tax cut on single family homeowners and average renters and families alike. There is no other way that that can be accomplished this year. At an equalized rate of real estate, all of us will be paying more taxes to the city, period. I, I don't understand, Mr. Mayor, what else we could come up with. So I submit that if there's four of us who are willing to go this direction, that we need to speak up because, I'm not concerned about what Richmond may or may not do. I represent Lynchburg. And if Richmond wants to pontificate on what they may or may not do on any sorts of laws, that's their prerogative. I know right now this is possible. And I still accomplish everything else that has been set up in the proposed budget. I would likely be more interested in trying to come off a little bit on the lodging tax rate and the nightly bed fee to help accommodate, maybe a percent and a dollar. But I think this council needs to speak up because this is the opportunity for relief on the thousands of doors that I knocked in the primary and November election. That's the folks who this helps most and that's who I want to help.
Yes, sir.
Um, so I agree with Councilman Feraldi as far as maybe coming off the, the lodging tax a little bit, maybe going down to like seven and a half and $2 and seeing what that would do in this case. What, what we'd have to do to get there while not going up tremendously, if possible, um, on the numbers and see kind of where that would land things. Also, are you planning on presenting the equalized budget tonight, today, now?
The, the claim would be after this presentation, we would move into there. Unless Council tells us that there's, if Council tells us there's support amongst four of you for this plan, then, um, then I don't, I don't know that we would need to do that.
Just because, um, if necessary, let's show the alternative to this. Because if everybody wants to see what happens at 76 and the catastrophic effects of equals, an equalized budget and all that comes away from our city services, uh, go ahead. Cause it's not good. We can poke holes like Swiss cheese in this plan and the plan that we saw two weeks ago, if you want to, because that seems like all that my colleagues want to do is just attack and poke holes in suggestions that are trying to make a compromise for the city so that people can, the city has what it needs to operate and the citizens have some relief. Or you can present the equalized budget and people can see what a disaster that will be because there are some significant things that are going to have to come off of the table in all departments in order for that to happen. So we can play the what-if game all day long. I got all kinds of what-if games I play. It's not a healthy place to live. We can, we can combat a lot of the what-ifs if they actually came to fruition. We can come back to this table and, and vote on things if we have to turn things around, if any of that came to be. But right now, we're not there. Right now, we're right here. And we have a possibility of providing actual relief to a larger pot of citizens that we've been talking about for two and a half years of giving a, a bigger group of our citizens versus only the homeowners, a chance to actually experience relief. And it's been demonstrated here tonight. So sometimes we only care about the homeowners. Sometimes we're hating on our business owners. Tonight, we care about our business owners. We, we dance around the table all the time about who we care about. I care about everybody. I care about a whole city. Our citizens, um, are not our commercial property owners. While, while some of our commercial property owners happen to be our citizens, they tend to be a little bit more fortunate than a big majority of our citizens. So if we're going to have a better impact on giving more relief to our citizens who aren't big commercial owners, then I say let's try to help them and actually give them a break. And this plan, I think, actually does. So I'm supportive of it. I think at the end of the day, it makes more sense than some of the other plans. And my only ask would be try to come down a little bit on the, the lodging if we can.
Let me tell you what I really think. I think we've just wasted another meeting on a, on a plan that could change in Jan, uh, November by an election and we back, back here again. And I think it's a shell game. I think all this is a shell game. It's, it's a bunch of numbers that are meant to confuse. The one number that matters is the city is taking more money in.
Mr. Mayor, it's my understanding, we're not supposed to assume other members' intentions.
It's not a, it's not a rule. What's the point of order?
I, I heard the Vice Mayor say that this was intended to distract and confuse people. And that, that would be breaking the rule that the Vice Mayor said two weeks ago, we, we should be breaking. We shouldn't be assuming intentions of our colleagues.
So I don't think it's a per se rule.
Oh.
It could probably be.
It could probably be associated with, uh, um, you know, engaging in inappropriate decorum during the meeting, if, if that's what it is, but you know.
For the record, by all means, I'm just trying to prove a point that it wasn't breaking a rule.
Okay.
Feel free to assume all you want.
Thank you. If I can continue. So we spent last meeting talking about a massive tax increase. We're spending this meeting talking a tax increase. I keep waiting for my colleagues to spend just a few moments on reducing spending because there's multiple ways to make a ballot, a, a budget work. And the amount of time we've spent on massive tax increases, whether you want to hate on the business, which has been the preference of the last two meetings, or you want to help homeowners, which has gotten almost zero talk from us, but has gotten huge numbers of people turning out to tell us what they want. We've heard from them. And then last week, last time we heard from the business owners who said horrible idea, waste of time, don't do it, you know? And we heard a lot of emails, a lot of phone calls, a lot of people speaking against taxes. And I don't want to forget those people. They're still in my head. I still hear their voices. And they may not be here tonight, but I haven't forgotten. And, uh, how much time are we gonna waste on these hypothetical plans that could change with a whim in November? When we really need to be talking about how to reduce spending? Can we just spend a little bit of time talking about that? Because that's the way I do it in my house when I try to make things match up. I tighten my belt. I reduce spending. I don't go and say, oh, I'm going to take from hotel people, not an option. Oh, I'm going to take from the businesses. I can't do that. What I've got to do is I've got to say, okay, I've got to live within my means. And that's what I want to do. I want to spend a little bit of time talking about reducing spending. Because this whole thing has spent an extraordinary amount of time of this council and the citizens and everybody for a couple of plans that I just don't, I don't think they're great plans. And they could all go by the wayside based on an election. So let's, let's get something solid. If we reduce spending, that's solid. Let's have that conversation. I'm all about that. But it looks like we've got another work session where we've pretty much spent the whole thing on a, on a proposal to increase taxes. And that seems to get all the time and all the attention is how can we increase taxes? Can we just spend a little time on how to reduce spending? That's what I'd like to do.
Ms. Timmer?
I want to piggyback the Vice Mayor's comments and it was a wonderful segue. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Uh, but it's not a compromise without a reduction in, um, the request to spending. It's not even a reduction in spending from the previous fiscal year. It's a reduction in the request. And so it's not a compromise unless there's a reduction in the request of the proposed budget when it comes to spending. Uh, Mr. Feraldi made an excellent point. With equalization, most of our bills are still going up. Again, that is because there's been such an increase in the valuations that with equalization and other revenue sources, there will still be an increase in the city's revenue from the previous fiscal year. Ms. Reed made an excellent point that we have the ability to come back and vote and change things. We have the opportunity and we have the authority to do something that our families do not have the authority or the ability to do. And that is midstream, we can come back here and we can say, maybe we made a mistake and we can increase the rates. Families don't get to adjust their income on a whim like that because we have the compulsory power of government. And so it is our responsibility to evaluate spending based on policy rather than allowing spending to drive our policy decisions. We have to decide our priorities as a governance and how we're assessing the monies that are coming in and recognizing that they're not our own, not assuming that valuation increases are therefore greater revenue for us, but actually valuing the fact that we are stewarding the responsibility of those taxpayer dollars and protecting values. The impact of higher taxes on assessed value is a real thing. And so if we start playing with these rates, we have the capacity and the possibility of really impacting the assessed value of properties, of impacting the builders in our community. Uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Missions brought this up. Where we place tax burden has to do with an element of value. I'm going to take a second. I'm getting frustrated, so I'm going to calm myself down. We saw the same issue with the hotel shift. When we looked at the possibility of shifting the burden predominantly onto our hoteliers, it created a level of instability and it created an unsustainable burden. And so when we play with tax shifts in the name of tax relief, it creates instability and it creates uncertainty. The way that we protect property value, we're not even, again, talking about a cut. We're simply talking about equalization that keeps stability. And it also, again, allows the city to have greater revenue than the previous fiscal year. It is not a reduction in that revenue. It's only a reduction in the proposed increase. And that's so important as we have these discussions. So I, I'm not in favor of shifting things around. I believe that we need to move towards equalization. And with equalization, that is a compromise because it is a reduction in the proposed increase. And we move from there. And, and then we can assess the real issues. Where is there excess spending? Where do we need to focus on our priorities? Any business does this. Any home does this. We need to do this as government. And that is how we can respect our citizens in this way. Thank you.
Okay, everybody has spoken. Call a question.
Mr. Mayor?
There's not a vote.
If I may, we can't, it's, it's, it's against the rules of procedure to vote in a, in a work session. And something of this magnitude should have an actual vote. So if you guys want to vote on this, feel free to, um, somebody motion to suspend the rules and, and, and vote on moving forward on this. If that's what you would like to do, I would say that that's appropriate.
Mr. Farady?
I would simply submit, um, Mayor, you have three members of your council who have expressed support of this concept. Two of which have indicated, uh, a lower lodging and per night bed fee. The adjustments I don't believe are that dramatic. Uh, but there are three members of councils expressed a desire to move this path. If there's a fourth, then there is a majority who have, who are willing to pursue this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Something of this magnitude, where we're talking about shifting a tax burden that could result in a 34% increase in our real estate tax rate, should, we, we should vote on that. That should not be a, um, something that we just informal poll. This, this is something that, that we should vote on. We're elected by the citizens to debate on matters and vote on issues.
Yes.
And I believe that, that there's a method in our rules of procedure, two ways it can be done. You can either have the super majority to, to vote in a work session, or you can, somebody can make a motion to suspend the rules.
Mayor, all I was saying is that as we did at our very last meeting, staff asks if there's consensus to go a direction to get stuff lined up. Then they take that and get it teed up for the next opportunity. So that's all I was saying. I'm not saying we vote yes or no. Does it happen? Saying can staff get the direction, whether or not this is a direction a majority of council wants to go and get everything lined up?
And Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Consensus would be seven. Not for the-
Mayor, so I think what the city staff is probably looking for is if there's a majority, at least four members in favor of what has been presented tonight. So really, it sounds like as Councilman Feraldi had mentioned, that there's three, you know, on, on the opposite side of the dais here and really comes down to what you think, Mr. Mayor, as far as what-
I'm going to support this plan. I'm, I'm going to support the plan for tax relief.
It's not tax relief.
Mr. Mayor? There, uh, Mr. Missions had submitted, uh, the request for a presentation that addresses how to adjust spending and spending priorities. And he actually submitted that request prior to Mr. Feraldi's request for this presentation from staff. And yet, Mr. Missions' request was denied to be on the agenda for some reason unknown to me that I, I really don't fully understand according to our rules of procedure. So I would suggest or, um, offer that we should have that discussion before we make a decision on this discussion because they are directly related and it is relevant.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I had anticipated this come up. The difference here is that I asked staff for them to present and come up with the numbers necessary to do this, not for myself to present it. And for the record, if we are to be technical and to a T and also stand up for the staff who I think have been incredibly mis, have been incredibly abused the last week and a half by some members of council. If we're going to be following the letter of our own rules, that submission was sent at 7:23 PM and we're at a 5:20 PM work session that started at 4:00. 7:23 PM and we're at a 5:20 PM work session that started at 4:00. It was not submitted within seven days. So if we want to be technical, having a council member present something is not on this agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
My comments in no way are intended to disparage staff. I'm simply pointing out that we as council members should have the opportunity to present. If Mr. Feraldi wants to take it down to the second, by all means. When I first came on, I had spoken with our clerk of council. I'm thankful for that conversation. And at that time, I had been instructed to get it in before Thursday, which would be seven technical days rather than seven business days. These things aren't directly outlined in the rules. I would hope that this body would have the favorability towards the intent of the rules of a favorable timeframe or a reasonable timeframe in order to put forward a request rather than down to the second. My timepiece doesn't keep seconds. Timepiece, my watch. Anyway, the point being, Mr. Missions' presentation is very relevant because, again, we have failed to discuss where we would place our priorities when it comes to these elements of spending. And equalization, again, and I know I keep saying this, but it's so significant. It is not a reduction in the previous year's budget. It is only a reduction in the requested increase for this year's budget. And so being able to understand where those priorities could be and being able to have that conversation is the responsibility of council rather than to assume that we need 14 million additional dollars in revenue. So I, I would request that we have Mr. Missions' presentation before we move forward on a decision when it comes to a proposed plan.
Ms. Reed.
So, Mr. Patrick, you've had four people that have given direction. So what, can you do something with that?
If, if we leave the work session understanding that four people want to move forward with the car tax plan, then, then yes, we can figure out the path forward and enact that plan as quickly and efficiently as possible.
Okay, great. So according to what you said earlier, then we don't need to go forward with any other further budget presentation?
I don't know that I want to wade into that question. If, if staff leaves this meeting with an understanding that four people on council have a plan they agree to, to get a budget passed quickly and efficiently, then we have the instruction that we need to make that happen.
Okay, sounds like you do.
You have. We, we got, we have a...
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, hold on, hold on. We have a budget we have to get passed. We've been wrangling for what, a month? Two months? This needs to stop. We have a budget. City manager got a budget. He got a plan. We're gonna make it work. We're not children here. We just wrangle and wrangle about a whole bunch of stuff all the time. We say the same thing over and over again. It need to stop. We need to take care of the citizens. And most, most of the people that this relief will help are the people in low-income neighborhoods. Tax relief on a vehicle. It'll help them pay their insurances and everything else. You say you like, you care about the poor folk? You don't. You don't.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
She can go first.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, you say this needs to stop. My, I believe what needs to stop is silencing other council members. And that does not mean that I condone particular behavior. That does not mean that I support any individual's specific speech. It just means that we keep, as a council, in the efforts to go into closed session, in the efforts to gavel people down, we keep shutting down the discussions that we are responsible for having. That is my concern with this council. That the rules of procedure are now being manipulated and I can, I can write up the timeline. I can write up the time. Mr. Mayor, my question to you is, are you going to deny the ability for this presentation?
Ms. Missions, you have 10 minutes to make your presentation. 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before that, real quick, I just want to point out one thing. If you go to section six of our rules of procedure...
10 minutes to make your presentation.
I will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm sending it to you right now so you can get up, Ms. Braun. So if, if you look at our rules of procedure in section six, it actually says that all questions submitted to the council shall be determined by a majority vote. That's a question. We just had a question submitted to us. And Mr. Vice Mayor, now that you're the presiding officer, I would suggest that giving staff direction by an informal poll of four is out of order in accordance with our rules of procedure. And that if the members here want to provide direction, there's a method to do so and they need to vote. Mr. Mayor.
Would you like to join the quorum, Mr. Wilder?
And I just...
Mr. Missions, I need your presentation. If you don't mind, I would be able to slide through anything you can see.
All right.
Well, Mr. Vice Mayor, I, I would, may I have the floor for your comment?
I would just like to make the point that there has been a desire to have a discussion and this discussion has been continually shut down. And now members are no longer participating in this discussion, even though it's the very discussion that Mr. Feraldi has requested from the dais. So I would like to see your presentation.
Sure. And if you can just open up Acrobat, I think we should be able to slide through it. Ms. Braun.
And now it's...
Request.
Can you, can you open up Adobe Acrobat? I can see it right there.
So this is, this is the work session packet that I have. This is the Adobe work session packet.
Sure. The email I just sent you.
Okay.
Did you get the email?
It's in a few minutes.
It's in an email I just sent you.
We need our city attorney.
I'm gonna get this closed and then I'm gonna put it on my flash drive and I'm gonna put that on the computer.
I can put it on flash drive or you can only do it on Facebook.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may just add for the record, it's my understanding based on previous consultation with your office that we still have a quorum because we began the meeting with a quorum. That was guidance given by your office previously.
No, that's, that's not correct. Because I understand that once you lose...
So your guidance is contrary to your previous guidance.
Once you lose a quorum, you have to either recess to get your quorum back or simply recess until a quorum returns or you just sit and wait till a quorum comes back. But you can't conduct public, excuse me, public business without a quorum. That's why I left.
Isn't this contrary to Hope's previous guidance?
Mr. City Attorney, that is incorrect.
We do have a quorum now. We have a quorum now.
Okay, well, you have a, you have a quorum at this point and the mayor's back to, to handle the meeting.
Little, uh, technical, you know, with that being said, I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules of procedure. If I can get a second on that?
Sure.
And I think we should be able to make a motion to suspend the rules of procedure and address the issue at hand with the presentation with an actual vote, not informal polling. I believe we have a method, a duty to vote according to our rules of procedure. So I'm gonna make a motion, again, that we suspend the rules of procedure. Nope, we've got people coming back. I'll withdraw my motion. All right. I'm waiting on, I'm waiting on Ms. Braun to put it up, Mr. Mayor. She wasn't signing to her email. As soon as Ms. Braun gets it up, I'll be ready to go.
I believe that what was just attempted to be done was to use parliamentary tricks to reject what the will of council was just because you slipped out and went to the restroom. And I think it's inappropriate. I think it's insulting to not just you, but the office of mayor and has lost any opportunity or should not have any minute of this meeting to continue to present if that was the sly move that was just attempted by my colleague.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm ready to go if you're ready.
Quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if you take a look at this graph here, what you see is you see several lines. The first one is gonna be the green line. Obviously, that's the bold line. That shows you how revenue for the city of Lynchburg would flow with an equalized tax rate. The blue line, what that represents is the actual managers and it also is the adopted, showing that as if it were adopted, excuse me, over time. The blue line is what the proposals have been in the past for the managers' proposed revenue in the budget. So what you're looking at, green line versus the blue dash line is proposals. And then the actual revenue, right, is the solid green line versus the dots demonstrates what was actually collected. The reason that ends in 2024 is because those are the last numbers we got. And the reason I had to put those little yellow diamonds in is to show that there was a federal stimulus that hit in FY 2023 that was a $33.3 million increase in dedicated federal aid that is, kind of throws off that number. So we pulled that out so we can see what that looks like. So over time, what you can see is it's pretty clear that the general fund actual revenue is greater than the adopted revenue. And the blue line represents what the manager proposed. If you can go to the next page, please, Ms. Braun. Thank you. All right. So just something I want to point out, and I've got to meet a lot of people in the lodging industry because of these proposals to, to just do these ridiculous tax increases on the lodging industry that we've had. And fortunately, they've told us that the revenue has been very strong in April and May and we should see rebounds in that. So what I want to point out here is that where we look at between March of '25 and March of '24, right, we're pretty much ahead everywhere except for about $5,000 behind lodging. And the reason I want to point that out is because we have 500,000 less proposed in our revenue for lodging tax and 500,000 less in our revenue proposed for meals tax. That's a million-dollar gap if we were to have flat. Where in previous years, our projections for meals and lodging tax have actually increased. I know that there's potentially some concerns about lodging since we're kind of flat there. But meals tax, right now, we're ahead in the best months for meals tax. You know, we haven't even hit May yet with graduation. So that's coming. All right, next slide. So when you look at this overall and you look at what we did in 2024, right, what you have at the top is you have just your dedicated revenue and then, excuse me, your non-dedicated revenue. And at the bottom is a combination of both. So that's our general fund revenue we're looking at. So our actual revenue total from 2024, when we went to equalization and reduced the real estate tax by several pennies underneath equalization, our actual revenue was $11.2 million more than what was in the adopted budget in 2024. So we adopted $214 million. We ended up 214.7. We ended up with 225.9. That is a pretty substantial difference, 11.2 million. And now what's interesting about that is 11.2 million is the gap that we have to close if we were to equalize the real estate tax rate. If you go to the next slide.
Again, from the proposed.
Again, from the proposed. So what we need are options, options to close the gap. These are options that would limit some spending and these are also options that would bring in some new revenue. And the only new revenue that's being done here is we've got the ambulance service fee ordinance that's proposed, an adjustment to the meals tax revenue to flat, the lodging tax revenue to flat, to equalize the tax rate. We would not need to do the, the tax relief program for 500,000 that's in there, so we remove that. The 3% pay increase for all city employees, the cost of that would get cut in half if we implemented it January 1st. The reason that I know that that's a common practice is because it happened to me multiple times when I worked for the city. So everybody still gets the 3% increase, the cut, cut that price in half by waiting till, delaying till January 1st. And then eliminating the managed vacancy savings by $2 million, unfunding the current vacancies, but that's not including the current vacancies in public safety, emission-critical positions in water resources, which is a special revenue fund, and then also our positions in public works. And then capping discretionary non-personnel spending to 110% of actual spending in '24. What that means is with all the information that was provided, we know based on line items what was spent in 2024. And we can compare that to what we've seen in the proposed budget in the areas like contractual services and other charges and various different line items that aren't personnel, actually saying, you know what? Inflation was 5%, a little less than that, over the last two years. Double that number to 10% and round and say, you're limited to only spending this much more than you actually spent in 2024, which we just found out in December. And then finally, the last piece of the puzzle would be adjusting the fund balance to 10% of, of the revised general fund revenue. So that is how we could do it and equalize. The plan that was presented before to you was a plan to shift the tax burden, not to lower it. It's, it's semantics, okay? It doesn't actually do anything to the tax burden other than move it. So you penalize one for the other. And that's what you're doing. It's also gonna put us at risk if there were to be any state relief with any plan that comes forward of actually losing that revenue. And that's not something that we should do. We shouldn't gamble with, what was that amount? 14 million? I think somewhere in that ballpark. Or 12 point, 12.2? We shouldn't gamble with 12.2 million of our taxpayers' money by putting it somewhere where the, the relief may not cover it. It's simple. Reduce spending. And it's not even a reduction. It's actually an increase. Everything proposed on here is an increase in spending. I don't think that was even 10 minutes, Mr. Mayor.
So for our finance team here, so like I used, I used to like, you know how you hear the expression like, I'm not a lawyer, but I play one on TV. I'm not a doctor, but I play one on TV. So I do that a lot, you know, because I watch enough crime shows that I'm like, I'm totally a crime team investigator because I've watched so many times. I'm totally a doctor because I've watched Grey's Anatomy so many times, but I'm clearly not. So y'all are the finance experts and you know our, you know, budget inside and out. So tell me now, is that legitimate? Like, can that really be done? Because you guys, I know you actually have the equalized budget available of what it really looks like and what actually has to be cut in orders for the city to operate in a healthy way. Ms. Witt, thoughts?
I would not trust those numbers until I played them out.
Mm-hmm. All right. Because you, did you provide any of that information to him?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay.
From what, submissions?
The proposed budget and the submissions looking at actual costs from 2024 was in there. So if you provided us wrong information, that was inaccurate.
I don't know how you put it together, so...
I'd be happy to walk you through it.
Okay.
I mean, it violates council's financial policies by at least $4.6 million, by using $4.6 million of one-time funds to balance an ongoing budget. So if we want to violate the financial policies of council and put us in a situation where we have a structurally imbalanced budget, that, that's the adjusting the fund balance to 10%. That's one-time funding. If you delay salary increases until January, what you're doing is pushing the problem into the next fiscal year because you've got to annualize those costs, right? So you provide a salary increase in January, come the next year, you've got a, the next budget, you've got to pick up the other half of that cost. So a budget that is going to be extraordinarily difficult in fiscal year 2027 already, based on... on pure economics and reality, would be made doubly tough by the fact that we've got to pick up, we've got to annualize the second half of salary increases. Here's the concern, right? And that is, if we want to juxtapose the two ways, the two plans that we've discussed tonight have been presented, what I would say is this. Councilman Faraldi reached out to staff a week ago and asked for them to vet an idea that he had. We were able to do that, we spent a great deal of time doing that. We have seen this now for the first time. And generally speaking, when that happens, we are skeptical of the intent and the reality.
Right. I feel like this has happened before, one time at least. So, yeah, that's my question. And we've also had several months to see a plan like this, and it hasn't happened until now as well, so I just am curious about that. So I wanted to see your thoughts. And if we're violating our own policy, does this, does this have any impact, this plan either on like, like our ratings or anything like that? Does this impacting those things?
Yep. The rating agencies follow all budget adoption, they follow articles in the newspaper, they follow our audit trail, all of that, and they would not look favorably when they see that we've used one-time money to solve an operating problem.
I am, thank you.
Ms. Timmer?
For the adjusted fund balance, when it comes to the revised general fund revenue, what's the primary revenue source for that?
Savings.
Savings. Because my, the reason I ask is because my understanding of that revenue is that it is not one-time funding because it's not, for example, coming from a lawsuit settlement that is just a one-off payment, but it's actually coming from the source being predominantly the real estate revenue that's coming in.
This would be the same as you having $10,000 of expenses per year and funding 8,000 with income and 2,000 from savings. It's, we have a lump sum of money that sits in fund balance. If you're to reduce that amount that you have in the lump sum, you can spend it once, but you can't spend it more than once. I mean, it's purely one-time money. You're using fund balance to pay for ongoing expenses.
It's like spending your savings. It's one-time, you don't get to spend it twice. My husband would tell me I get to spend my birthday money twice. That's the money I get to spend twice.
That's been my concern with how grant money's been applied in the schools, but I'm going to kick it over to Mr. Missions because I feel like he explains this one better than me.
So.
I need to recognize Mr. Missions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We got to wrap it up.
But the 10% is the end of your fund balance is what we're looking at, correct?
No, it's when we budget.
But it's when you look at the, at the actual, when you're looking at the financial summary, right? When you look at the financial summary on page, just had it, proposed 26, when you look at the financial summary, we're looking at the end fund balance on this page towards the bottom. It says. Unassigned fund balance at the end. Is that right? What I'm looking at right now, we've got it set at 28.379 million, does that sound about?
I can't see what you're looking at.
So, so that's.
Which column are you looking at?
I'm looking at the proposed, I'm going up pages.
Then that's a budget number. That's not a real number.
So the proposed budget numbers?
If you look in the actual column in your unassigned fund balance, that's, that's more of an actual number as a snapshot.
Well, then that's 40.3 million.
And that is your savings and it's one-time money. It's a result of additional revenues or less spending that falls to fund balance at the end of the year, but it's one-time money.
So additional revenues or less spending, right? Can we go back?
If you look at those additional revenues over the last several years, they come from our consumption revenues of sales, meals, and lodging.
Can we go back one, one page on that? So when we look at this, we've got actual revenue, 225.9, adopted revenue, 214.7, right? So that's, I would offer that, a large chunk of that, that's 11.2 million, is actually, is revenue, it's not savings. Our fund balance is.
Once it goes to fund balance, it's one-time money.
But if we're getting that money year after year, that money is coming in year after year.
That doesn't make it reoccurring. When it falls to fund balance, to spend it out of fund balance is one-time money. You want to bring up gap, there's your gap.
The revenue source is ongoing funding. So once we take it and we put it, so what you're saying is once we take it and we put it in the fund balance, like, like we captured in that account, like even if it grows and grows and grows, that forever?
But your revenues minus expenditures, anything left falls to fund balance.
And then we have been spending, we have been spending the excess fund balance.
Correct.
On our, on our capital program, year after year after year, because those are one-time expenses. That's what brings the level of savings back down to, you know, 11.8% or wherever we're landing at. And you're also looking at revenue in excess of budgeted revenue in years where we experienced sort of, you know, recently unprecedented levels of inflation, and you're seeing that inflation show up in your sales, in your meals, in your hotel tax. That has, and that additional revenue has allowed us to invest in our capital program. We do not anticipate that happening going forward. It is extraordinarily unlikely that we will see years going forward where we have $11 million more in revenue than in budgeted revenue. And, and even if, even if you did, it's like, it's like when you invest in a mutual fund or a stock, right? They tell you, past performance is not an indication of future results, right? That's where we are. Bottom line, fund balance is one-time money, it's your savings. Using it to fund ongoing expenses is violation of council's financial policies, and it's one of the very few things that will get us in consistent trouble with the rating agencies, right? That, it is the single biggest budget no-no that we could, that we could do as professional finance staff, because what it does is it creates a slippery slope that allows us to dig deeper and deeper potential budget holes. We cannot fund ongoing expenses with one-time revenue. It is, it is the worst decision, financial decision a council could make budgetarily.
So with that, if you can go back to the last page, please, Matty, then we're $4 million away using the other measures, if that, if that's what you offer. I don't see that, the, it's a, it's a, it's a technical adjustment, that money's coming in year after year. I understand your position on it. I've talked to people with tremendous amounts of experience.
It's reality.
No, I mean, I understand your position on it. It's, 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 I've talked to people with a tremendous, tremendous amount of experience in this. A lot of it has to do also with the projections, right? You know, why are we eliminating revenue from our meals and lodging tax based on where we're at right now compared to where we were last year, right? We're actually in a better position except for lodging. Lodging's a little flat. So, you know, we either want money in the savings bank for the city or we want money in the savings bank for our citizens. But this plan that was proposed that's going to raise the real estate tax to 103 and a 34% increase and not touch any spending, that is moving forward without a vote, that I believe is violating our rules of procedure?
You done? Mr. Timmer?
Yeah, I tend to agree with what Mr. Missions just said, that we're pushing forward two really big tax increases on our citizens without even a vote. I think it's kind of unprecedented. I think the hotel folks deserve a full and open discussion and full counsel and a, and an open vote. I understand why folks want to avoid voting for tax increases. I get it, I understand. But I still think that people deserve a vote and to know where you stand on tax increases. Because this, let me, let me be ultimately very clear, Mr. Mayor. This is a tax increase that we're pushing forward with no vote, two of them. It's both the real estate tax increase and the hotels' tax increase. So I hope the media's paying attention because where was, there was no vote. There was just a consensus to go forward where the agenda was clear. We were supposed to be talking tonight about the budget work session, and what Councilman Feraldi had asked for is the staff to, to come back and present how to match equalization, which isn't a tax increase, which is what we support. The information we've been trying to gather that we haven't, haven't received, everything we've asked for, and there's been delays for a lot of the things that we've asked for from staff. People ask why it took so long for us to get this information, and it's because we didn't get the information we need to make decisions. And when people try to eliminate, thank you for your presentation, I'm sorry that it wasn't listened to, I could tell a lot of folks weren't paying attention, a lot of folks left the room, a lot of folks abandoned their, their post that the people elected them to. But I listened and I appreciate the work you put into it. It was the first time I heard some spending reductions, which seems to be an anathema to staff and certain members of council. We should be open to all ways to make the budget work, always. And ultimately, spending reductions should be part of it, and it should have come forward. And the budget that was proposed was bloated, full of tax increases, and didn't match the voting of this city. The people of this city have spoken pretty loudly about tax increases, and now we're having tax increases without even having a vote. I hope people are paying attention, though. I think they are. I think they're wiser than they're, they're taking advantage of it. Just because we didn't vote tonight doesn't mean we don't know exactly what's going on and who supported tax increases. And the staff needs to be more forthcoming and give us the information we made. You, you, you've got to be, you've got to be able to help us when we ask questions, we need answers. April 15th, I asked for information and I didn't get it till about a week, a few weeks ago.
You are not to be.
Was there a point of order? Because I didn't hear.
Well, point of order. You are, you are talking about staff. We are not here to talk about staff, okay?
Information that we requested.
We are not, we are not here to talk about staff, okay?
Well, they're, we were, it was brought up that we were waiting.
I'm going to make a point of order on that, Mr. Mayor.
And I want to explain why, why we may have waited late. We didn't get the information we requested, okay? That's the truth. Now, you may not like that, and we can talk about that without talking about staff if it'll help calm you. But when city council makes decisions on things as big and important as this budget and massive tax increases.
Mayor.
We need full information.
Can you let someone else speak?
And I, I want to try to make, you know, this attempt to silence people, I hope folks are paying attention too.
I'm not silencing anybody, Vice Mayor.
I'm trying to finish.
Go ahead, when you go finish.
Thank you. I will, I'll finish when I'm finished, Your, Your Honor. I am trying to get across the point that the people deserve a vote.
Okay.
And they deserve to know how their representatives stand. And when they run for office and they say they want to reduce taxes, but then they don't get in here and don't do that, people need to know that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Faradi?
I guarantee you, Mr. Mayor, there will be an opportunity. If you want to vote against essentially eliminating the car tax, be my guest. Be my guest. I know what this does for the thousands of doors, the actual thousands of doors that I knocked from January to November, not from September to November, November, from January, all through a primary, all through a baloney lawsuit, and all through a write-in campaign against me. The thousands of doors, I know who, how this will impact them. And if, and if, and if you want to vote against. No, I won't. If you want to vote against removing the car tax, be my guest. If you want to vote now, we could. I don't think that'd be appropriate. But we asked by consensus, hey, staff, does this get you a direction you can go to get stuff teed up for that very vote you want to have? I could take this vote right now.
Okay.
But I don't think that's appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Faradi. We're going to move into roll call. Mr. Faradi, roll call.
I'm clear, thank you.
You're clear? Ms. Reed?
I'm good.
Dr. Wilder?
Yeah, that's what a graduate, all of our graduates in our high schools, the private schools, well, the public schools, it's been an amazing graduation season. So I'm so thankful for all the great work that our teachers have done, our principal's done, the staff has done, to see our kids go through, several of the head kids graduates are really excited about that. Also, want to mention that Juneteenth is, the celebration is June, June the 21st at Miller Park from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There's a lot of amazing events going on at Miller Park. So we're so thankful for the coalition, us working together to do that. And I want to thank staff for the amazing job you've done during this budget session. I mean, you have been, wow, let me just say, I want to thank you for the work you're doing for our citizens, because you care about our citizens, you care about our community. We want to see our city thrive and grow, and I'm thankful for the work you're doing and the dedication you have to do your job and do the best you can. Any information we requested, I mean, the hundreds of emails I got in the past two days, thank you for responding to all those emails. You have done an amazing job. I really appreciate you and appreciate the work you're doing, and I continue to pray for you. God bless you.
Ms. Timmer?
No items, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Missions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things. One is, you know, I'm just going to speak to some matters that we saw happen this evening. So now there's going to be an attempt to raise the real estate tax rate beyond what was advertised without a public hearing and without a new reassessment notice sent to our citizens. I want everybody to hear that loud and clear. Beyond what was advertised, without a public hearing, and without new reassessment notices to our citizens, to show them what the proposed real estate tax increase will be. We are grossly out of compliance with state law. And I want to make it very clear what this looks like, okay? They're trying to shove down, this is in 89 cents, we're talking about 102.5. 102.5 on the real estate tax rate, right? That's what was presented here, that's what was discussed, that's the direction. They're saying there's consensus, there's no consensus. Consensus is all seven. Our rules of procedure are clear. We are supposed to vote on questions before the body. There was no vote. There was no vote. So what I want to make crystal clear is that you're pushing a 34% real estate tax increase on our citizens with no notice, with no new reassessment notices sent out, with the new Tax Transparency Act or whatever that's called that Delegate Walker carried, that shows people what the difference is and what they're paying in real estate tax with the proposed rate versus the current rate and what the equalization rate would be. That's what's being proposed here. That's what's being proposed. That's what's being proposed. You're saying, you know what? We don't care about public input. We don't care about transparency. We don't care about any of that. That's what's, that's what's being demonstrated in this plan. Is it's all about the bureaucrats and it's screwing the citizens. That's what's happening. This is a tax increase. There's no reduction here. We're moving it. We're moving the burden from one place to the other place. And I can tell you right now, if you do a 34% increase to the real estate tax rate, you're gonna crush the industry. I talked to brokers yesterday. I know Mr. Ferrari talks about being a Realtor. You know what? I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
My family works in real estate. My dad was a broker. I've got a lot of friends in real estate. I had a real estate license for years. This, right here, what we do to the real estate tax rate is going to be devastating. You're gonna Detroit Lynchburg. That's what you're gonna do. You're gonna Detroit Lynchburg. This is a volatile move that's going to crush our local economy in our city. And bureaucrats love that because when the city falls apart, it gives them more power. You know, that's the game. That's the game in Lynchburg, right? We had Democrats in charge for 20 years. They never removed a needle on poverty. Never. Not once. Not once. It only got worse. And you know what they did? They taxed, they spend, they taxed, they spend, they taxed, they spend. We're getting ready to go down that same path, but we're gonna do it more than they ever did. We're gonna do it more than they ever did. We're gonna crush the real estate market. We're gonna crush construction. There are jobs that are gonna be on the line from this. This is a reckless decision. It's a reckless move. And I hope it's reconsidered.
Mr. Deemer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree, this certainly has to go forward, uh, to a, a public hearing to, to comply with state law. If we're not gonna be lawbreakers, uh, I think that that's not where we want to go at all. The, the thing I wanted to bring up tonight that I've, uh, tried to work with my fellow colleagues on and is a public statement. So I'll just read it. "As Vice Mayor of the City of Lynchburg, I want to publicly acknowledge and apologize for the defamatory and inappropriate remarks made against Mr. Shawn Hunter of the Peacemakers Organization during a city council meeting held on November 28th, 2023. Despite Section 5.3 of Lynchburg City Council Rules of Procedure, which clearly states that the personal attacks upon council members, staff, or other individuals shall be ruled out of order by the presiding officer. That rule was not enforced. As a result, Mr. Hunter was subjected to a defamatory personal attack in a public government forum broadcast, live and now widely circulated on city-managed digital platforms. To make matters worse, city staff directed chamber cameras, cameras to focus on Mr. Hunter during the attack, compounding the emotional harm and ensuring that the false accusations were publicly associated with him in real time. On June 6th, 2025, a Virginia Circuit Court confirmed the judgment in Mr. Hunter's favor, holding that Ms. Consuela Jordan's statements were not true and legally constituted defamation under Virginia law. The court awarded Mr. Hunter $50,000 in damages, plus all court costs. Recognizing both the severity and the public nature of the harm he endured, the court found that Ms. Jordan's defamatory claims were based entirely on hearsay and lacked any supporting evidence. Virginia law defines defamation as a false factual statement communicated to a third party with fault, at least negligence, causing reputational harm. Let me be clear, I do not support altering or deleting the official public record of that meeting. That record must remain intact under the Virginia Public Records Act. However, duplicative copies under city control, particularly those used to provide content on websites and social media, must be reviewed and redacted or removed when legally permissible. As of June 4th, 2025, analytics for the November 28th, 2023 council meeting video contained the defamatory remarks as follows. Facebook, 300, 3,893 viewers have seen that defamation. It has been shared 14 times. YouTube has been viewed 319 times. City website, Civic Clerk, has been reviewed and 608 views. Additionally, the conduct exhibited during the November 28th, 2023 meeting clearly violated multiple provisions of the Lynchburg City Council Rules of Procedure. Section 5-4 also says, "Which governs a prohibited conduct for persons addressing council. These rules expressly forbid using language which insults or demeans any person." That's 5-4A4. Making nongermain or frivolous statements, 5-4A5. We've heard a lot of that tonight, haven't we? Engaging in behavior that intimidates others, 5-4A7. Addressing council on matters unrelated to city services, policies, or affairs, 5-4A8. It is evident these violations occurred during the remarks made against Mr. Shawn Hunter of the Peacemakers Organization. Unfortunately, the presiding officer, northern parliamentarian, took the action required under 5-4 to intervene and preserve order, as they are obligated to do when such conduct arises. Accordingly, I am apologizing, but I'm also introducing the following resolution immediately to ensure Mr. Hunter's rights are protected, to stop further harm, and to assure that nothing like this ever happens again in the people's chamber at the people's lectern. Apology by me may not mean a whole lot, Mr. Hunter. Thank you for joining us tonight. But even though I wasn't there, I did view it and it did affect me. And as a longtime resident of this city, it disturbed me and I was very disappointed. And I want you to see continuing justice. I'm glad you've been awarded $50,000 in all the court fees for what happened in our chamber. That was an abuse of our chamber in a way I had never witnessed in all of my viewing of city council. So with that in mind, and if anybody would like a copy, I'm happy to distribute it to whoever's left and seems to care. If you're not here, I hope you will still look at it. I did distribute this this morning and you have a copy already. But this resolution, resolution directs city staff to take legally, all legally permissible actions to protect the rights and dignity of Mr. Shawn Hunter, including the review of city-controlled digital content and enforcement of council rules of procedure. Whereas on November 28th, 2023, during a public meeting in Lynchburg City Council, a citizen was permitted to deliver defamatory and personal remarks against Mr. Shawn Hunter. And whereas the Lynchburg City Council Rules of Procedure, Section 5.3 states, "Speakers shall address council with civility and respect. Personal attacks on council members, staff, and other individuals shall be ruled out of order by the presiding officer." And this rule was not enforced during the meeting, resulting in serious reputational harm to Mr. Hunter. Whereas on June 6th, 2025, the Virginia Circuit Court confirmed the judgment in favor of Mr. Hunter, ruling that the statements made by Ms. Consuela Jordan were not true and constituted defamation under Virginia law, awarded Mr. Hunter $50,000 in damages, plus all court costs. And whereas defamation under Virginia common law consists of false statements of fact communicated to a third party with fault amounting to at least negligence and resulting in reputational harm. And whereas the injury was compounded by the actions of city staff who focused the chamber video cameras on Mr. Hunter for quite a while, while the defamatory remarks were being made, heightening public visibility and emotional distress. And whereas the defamatory content remains accessible to this day across multiple official city-managed digital platforms, when its continuing presence constitutes ongoing reputational damage. And whereas the public exposure of the defamatory content was significant, as documented in official analytics provided to council on June 4th, 2025, showing Facebook, 3,893 viewers, 14 shares, YouTube, 319 views, city website, 608 views. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the City of Lynchburg. The city council formally acknowledges that defamatory statements were made against Mr. Shawn Hunter during the November 28th, 2023 council meeting, that those statements violated Section 5.3 of the Rules of Procedure, and that a court of law has confirmed the falsity and unlawfulness of those statements on June 6th, 2025, awarding Mr. Hunter $50,000 in damages plus costs. The city staff are directed to take all legally permissible actions to protect Mr. Hunter's rights and dignity, including but not limited to reviewing all city-managed video and audio content of the November 28th, 2023 meeting, redacting or removing where permitted by law duplicative or nonessential postings that contain defamatory content or video focused on Mr. Hunter while preserving the official meeting record. Adding disclaimers or addition, annotations to any retained online versions that reflect the court ruling and clarify the inaccuracy of the original, original remarks. Number three, the council further directs staff to propose updates to the Rules of Procedure, specifically strengthening enforcement procedures for presiding officers regarding personal attacks, and establishing ethical standards for broadcast and camera control during public meetings. That nothing in this resolution shall authorize the deletion or alteration of the official record as required by law, but it affirms that the city's duty to prevent continued use of city platforms to cause reputational harm. That the city manager shall report back to the council within 30 days of adoption with a summary of actions taken, any legal limitations encountered, and further recommendations to improve transparency and citizens' protections in city proceedings. I would like to make a motion that we pass that resolution.
Point of order. Point of order is that we can't vote in a work session and in roll call. So that that would be out of order, but what I would offer, Mr. Mayor, is that I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules of procedure so that we can adopt this right now. So I'll make that as a motion that we suspend the rules of procedure.
I will second it. I believe that's a substitute motion, if I understand correctly. I will second that substitute motion.
So the, so the first motion is that we have to, I'll call the question.
Do we have to have consensus of 100% or, and therefore we not, we not vote during a session?
Move to suspend the rules.
So.
We made a motion to suspend the rules.
So do you have to have 100% consensus to do that?
Matt? Mayor, there's, I guess there's two things I'd, I'd offer as part of this. Now it's a discussion for the roll call.
There's a motion on the floor. I have a second.
Do I have the floor, Mr. Mayor?
I mean, I haven't got to speak to my motion.
Yeah, I, I, I address the attorney.
So there was, there was as part of the language, um, language included about the parliamentarian essentially not doing anything to stop what had happened. Under our rules of procedure, Section 3.3, it says, "The city attorney shall serve as the parliamentarian for the purpose of interpreting these rules of procedure. And the Code of Virginia, as may be directed by the presiding officer or as required as a result of a point of order raised by one or more of the council members. If the city attorney is unavailable, then the city manager shall serve as the parliamentarian." So certainly, um, the way I understand the role of the parliamentarian is not to interject to enforce the rules of procedure, but to answer or provide advice when point of orders are raised or as the presiding officer may need. Certainly, and the clerk had, had just reminded me about this, about the second component, about the motion to suspend the rules of procedure. Strictly speaking, as I understand it, there's a two-thirds requirement to suspend the rules. I have never really enforced that. And I say that because realistically, the council controls the rules of procedure and what a majority says is what goes. So certainly, um, I do think a majority, if they really desire to set aside that two-thirds requirement, they could to visit the vote. I will say from past precedent, as I understand it, um, this goes back to a, a work session, you know, for staff to be able to review it. It does make certain directions for city staff. I have certainly have not seen this resolution. I don't think the clerk has. So, but it's council's pleasure at this point, with that being said.
She got filibustered by the city attorney. I've got a motion to suspend the rules. I had a second and I'm asking that we call the question to suspend the rules so we can address this.
You want to vote? Vote.
Councilor Missions?
Yes.
Councilor Reed?
Nope.
Councilor Timmer?
Yes.
Councilor Wilder?
No.
Councilor, oh, sorry, Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right. Now that the rules are suspended, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to adopt Mr. Deemer, Vice Mayor Deemer's resolution.
Second. All right, so it sounds like the motion on the table is to adopt the resolution that's been handed out by Vice Mayor Deemer.
Sure. Matt, may I speak to the motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. I thank you for the time and effort you put into this. And Mr. Hunter, I see you in the back of the room and, uh, I'm sorry for what happened to you, for what was allowed to happen to you. I just want to let you know that, um, it shouldn't have happened. Should not have happened. And since that happened to you, what I learned from that was, um, to speak up when people are using that lectern to, to attack people and the citizens. So, um, I'm sorry. And I thank you, Vice Mayor Deemer, for putting this together.
Speak to my second.
Speak to your second.
I've spoken enough and I've taken up enough time and I, I apologize for that to my colleagues. But even though this only affects one person, unlike the budget that we talked about most of the night, it's still important. And the least of these deserves the same justice and respect, uh, in our chamber that every member of Lynchburg deserves. And we need to get this off of our social media. It's the right thing to do. So I, I hope it is the pleasure of my colleagues that we finally make this right so that we can move forward and, uh, and begin the healing process. So I hope you will, will vote for it.
Let's vote. Oh, go ahead.
I just, um, you know, um, I have seen our city council over the past two years. The past two years, we have been abused. Over the past two years, we have seen, um, we've been talk of the state, talk of the country, where people in Chicago has said, what's going on in Lynchburg? So, um, but now we want to talk about being nice to people. We have been everything but nice to people. We have, we have been nice to, we have a 30-plus years staff member, finance director, 20-plus years, who has been dedicated to our city, who we, we belittle, we've talked about, we've questioned their authority, but now we want to say about being, being nice and civil to people? I just, I don't, I don't understand that. You know, we've, we've been, we, we, we had a judge recently to almost call us racist for what we have done in our city over our judgment. But now we want to talk about being nice to people? I don't understand that. We've been considered to be almost racist, but now we want to say we're nice to people? I am so confused. I don't understand this. I question this. I do not support this motion. And I think this is just out of order. We have council members that is also not here. We should be, first of all, we should be voting during the, during the, during a session of this nature. And also all council members need to be here for that. Thank you.
Ms. Reed?
We were counseled by the city attorney about the danger of this discussion. About having any discussion at all.
That's privileged.
Thoroughly.
That's privileged.
I'm not divulging details.
That's privileged.
I'm not divulging details.
That's privileged.
So I'm not comfortable at all with anything going forward, with voting on anything about. I've listened to Mr. Friedman. I am not comfortable with moving forward at all with this.
Going for the question?
At all.
No, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My, my stance has consistently been that we need to move away from accusation without opportunities to respond. It is the very reason that I have opposed going into closed session as council where we bring a public accusation against another member, and then we go behind closed doors where it's privileged, and there's no opportunity to respond to that accusation in public where the accusation was originally brought. There needs to be the ability, there needs to be the process that allows for freedom of dialogue rather than shutting down the speech of another individual, but also while addressing the fact that you won in court, Mr. Hunter. Uh, sorry, I probably, don't turn the cameras. I don't want to create a problem. But there, there's a real issue in that he had no ability to respond. It was a direct violation of our rules. And, and I'm very sorry for what happened, and I'm sorry that this has been a pattern of the previous council and is becoming a pattern of the current one. And I definitely support Mr. Deemer's resolution, and I support upcoming rule changes that yet again I am advertising that I will be bringing to this council next month. Thank you.
Call for a question?
Call the question.
Councilor Missions?
Yes.
Councilor Reed?
No.
Councilor Timmer?
Yes.
Councilor Wilder?
A no.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
The motion passes.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to set the public hearing in accordance with what was presented to us earlier, and then also to send out the proper assessment notices so that the citizens can see advertised the real estate tax increases with this proposed plan. I make that as a motion.
Second.
All right. Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Attorney, there's a motion in a second on the floor, and I'm going to speak to my first. I think it's important that we are transparent with the citizens. Mr. Mayor, if we're proposing a 34% real estate tax increase over what was advertised, it's critical that we notify them and address this as such and be compliant. Make sure there's no concerns about us not properly notifying them. We've got the Tax Transparency Act that Delegate Walker carried and was passed. Thankful for that. And, and if we don't notify our citizens about this proposed increase that was presented, that four of you decided to move forward with, I think that, that would put us in a pickle. So that's why I make this as a motion.
Second.
All right, spoke second.
Speak to your second. We got to go.
Yeah, we got to go. But clearly, raising taxes without a public hearing is absolutely in violation of state code. And, and, and we need to have that. We, we got plenty of time. Let's do it right. Send out the notices as required in law, and, and then we're kosher. We're not, we're not breaking the laws. I'm not asking for any opinions. But I do support the motion, and I hope my colleagues will also support it in the interest of transparency and openness.
Now you don't want to hear from the parliamentarian. But again, I thought they were just giving direction to our, our staff. It was not for a vote. We didn't vote during close. We didn't vote during the roll call or whatever. We didn't vote during a work session. It was some direction, the sit, the staff had direction. See, I'm, oh gosh, I'm trying to, I don't want to say it's, I'm not putting any words in anybody, but sometimes people try to manipulate what's happening, and this is not correct. So they gave direction to the staff to go forward and bring back some proposals of what this looks like, and then they, they haven't given us any timelines. They haven't given us how to, what the notice is going to be like. We have to do all that as possible. We got to get all this stuff ironed out, so we ask and research this and bring it back to us. So why would you start a notice now where we haven't even voted on it, haven't even voted yet? It's a, it's a possibility. So again, staff need to bring it back this evening and give us information of how this process can work out. Thank you.
Mayor, I guess what I'd offer is this. I don't think there's any intent on the part of city staff to violate any notice laws as it relates to the plan that has been directed to proceed to city staff. So what, what I anticipate you all are going to see is addressing the public hearing and potentially a vote on the transient lodging tax this evening. Whether or not council addresses the real estate tax rate this evening is, is yet to be determined. But assuming it is not, what I think is going to happen is that a budget is going to be brought to you in the near future. In compliance with Virginia law, I anticipate that council will adopt a budget before July 1st, and then the plan will, that has been presented by a majority of council will be appropriately noticed and put before city council and the public July 8th or, or soon thereafter.
Listen to Patrick.
That it would be illegal to adopt a real estate tax rate that is higher than 89 cents currently without taking appropriate public notice action. And all we were asking for is direction so that we could come back with a plan that would meet all the intent of council and the legal requirements of the state of Virginia. And that's what we intend to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, the, the, I've, I've heard the, the comments, but what I've not heard either one of you or anybody say is the reassessment notices. We have a new state law that's a Tax Transparency Act. If we don't send out new notices that show what the proposed rate is, that is highly inappropriate. Because what we will have done is we have advertised through the mail to our citizens what their proposed real estate tax increase is based on a fictitious number, a fictitious rate that's not even on the table anymore. So the rules have been suspended, Mr. Feraldi, and totally out of order. Anyways, we've got to send those reassessment notices out.
No.
And I have not heard either of that back from the staff members. If you guys, my motion was clear. It was the public hearing requirement for what was presented because the direction was to put something together with what was presented up here, which had a rate of 102.5. And that is a 34% increase to the real estate tax rate. And then I understand and appreciate what you said about the public hearing. I'm glad you're going to do that. But what I haven't heard and had heard any confirmation about is the reassessment notices. We have got to send out new reassessment notices advertising what that tax increase is going to be, just like we did previously. And that's, that's what I'm concerned about.
But the direction was to get something prepared and bring it back yet, and we haven't seen that yet. So there's nothing to vote on tonight until we, until staff gets back to us.
There's a motion in a second on the floor.
Fine, we can vote, but they, staff hasn't come back to us, and we haven't decided the exact rate yet. Right, go ahead and call the vote then.
Call the vote.
There's other people that haven't spoken.
Councilor Feraldi? Councilor Missions?
Excuse me?
Councilor Missions?
Yes.
Councilor Reed?
No.
Councilor Timmer?
I didn't have the opportunity to bring forward my questions, but yes.
Councilor Wilder?
No.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Mayor, I moved that we stand in recess until 7:00 o'clock.
Meet the adjournments.